I'd like to call the Reesville City Council meeting Tuesday, July 8th, 2025 to order. First item on the agenda will be invocation by Dr. David Bracken, pastor of Jerusalem Baptist Church in Spencer, North Carolina, and interim Reesville Police Works Director. Pastor Bracken, if you would please, in addition to your prayer tonight, add those persons and families from Texas and from North Carolina.
Let us pray. Lord, we're thankful once again for this opportunity to come together, Lord, in a King Community. And Father, we pray right now your blessings upon those who assembled here, those our brothers and sisters in Texas and throughout North Carolina, Lord, who suffered loss. Well, Father, we pray that you just help us, show us the way that we should go. And Lord, help us not to focus on our differences, Lord, but the things that we have in common. And now, Lord, as we come together, we ask for your guidance, we ask for you, for you to just instill in us the things that you would have us to do, the things that are right in your sight. Now bless us, Lord, as only you can, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
We will rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the Reesville with liberty and justice for all.
We're doing things just a little bit new tonight. We've got something added to the agenda, the adoption of agenda. Let's present it. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as it is presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and a discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda, we have proclamations and recognition. And on tonight, we have a recognition of public works retiree Daniel Danny Young, who retired with some 37 years of service. I've been knowing you as Daddy. Got a strange saying, Daddy. Whereas Daniel Danny Young began his employment in the city of Greed on March 28th, 1998, I mean, 1980, as a construction mechanic, now officially retired from the city as of April 1st, 2025. And whereas during his 37 years in the city's public working part, his title and duties have changed, but the reliability, efficiency, and proactive nature displayed on a daily basis remain constant and permanent. Ultimately, retired from the position of approved leader of Greed. Could you tell us what approved leader of Greed is all about? Whereas Danny often made the work lives of his coworkers a little bit better because they always knew, they never had to worry when he was on duty, when he was on the job. Whether it was ensuring things were ready for the local festivals or parades, holiday decorations, flags and boughs were up on time, the trees and vegetation were cut back from the streets and sidewalks, and that the street marking signs and signals were maintained among other things. I can recall one night being out at about 10:30, 11 o'clock, with Daniel checking. Well, two nights, or two nights. Now therefore, the city council and city of Reesville takes great pleasure in recognizing and honoring Daniel Danny Young. On the occasion of his well-deserved retirement and publicly expresses to him grateful appreciation for his outstanding and distinguished career with the city of Reesville, and early wishes him and his family much health, happiness, and prosperity through the years to come. This is the eighth day of July, 2025.
So a lot of change in 37 years, worked with a lot of great people. I'm going to raise that sometimes, a few times, sometimes a little bit, but overall I've had a great, great career here and hope things continue to go on there.
That's one real special. So you keep time as you do your honey doobies.
I see. I was like, Jim, this is back here, never really backed highly many, many years ago. I owe a great deal of gratitude, a great leader, great representation of the city of Reesville, a great man to work for. So I'd say thank you for the reference.
Danny, I always had a smile on his face, even before I was a part of the city of Reesville, a reference to being on city council. If I saw Danny waving, then we're always waving. He's always had really, really good customer service. Danny, we want to appreciate you, appreciate you too. More than you know.
Man, just a little hand. That guy doing work for me years.
Yeah?
Yes, way back.
Way back.
Congratulations, Danny.
Okay, next we have recognition of the city of Reesville's 2024 Employee of the Year, Trevor Beck. Silva's got that.
Mr. Beck, would you and your family like to come on?
I'm Trevor Beck, this is my wife, Charlotte Beck. This is our eighth uncle's son, Henry. He's very excited to be here.
Well, it is truly my honor and privilege to recognize an individual whose work ethic, dedication, and positive spirit have made extraordinary impact on the city this past year. This employee is the kind of employee every organization hopes for. Through what has been a challenging and transitional year for his division, he has remained a steady, dependable force. After the resignation of the division supervisor, this employee stepped up without hesitation. They not only kept the department afloat, but they did so with professionalism, integrity, and a positive attitude, and uplifted everyone around you. He's also become a very familiar and friendly phrase across our city, helping set up offices, identifying potential safety hazards, and participating in city events like Lunch and Learn, and competing in Battle of the Cup. He's always willing to lend a hand, whether it's installing something at City Hall, checking on me to see if I need something in the office, or finding the right contractor for a facility project. His initiative and reliability have not gone unnoticed. What sets him apart isn't his technical skill, but his character. He builds trust, forms strong relationships, and brings people together. He is a true team player and a dedicated public servant and role model for us all. Please welcome the 2024 City of Reesville Employee of the Year, Mr. Trevor Beck. We're very proud of you. Thank you so much.
Trevor's got one of those winning smiles, too. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have two items. Is there anyone who'd like to have one of those two pulled? If not, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So both.
A motion and a second, and a discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the city of Reesville by voluntary annexation of approximately 48.59 acres, parcel number 155460 off Salem Church Road, A 2025-03 enclosure 1, Drew Barf, uh, Bigelow. I almost said Barfoot. Drew Bigelow, planning and community development. Drew, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And so attached is a fully executed request by the property owner, Judith Holstrom, to voluntarily annex 48.59 acres located off of Salem Church Road, Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 1554. This is a non-contiguous annexation. The property meets the statutory requirements under NCGS 160A-58.1B for annexation as the nearest point of the property is not more than three miles from the primary corporate limit, and is no closer to another municipality than it is to the city of Reesville. And Reesville remains well under the 10% acreage allotment allowed for non-contiguous annexation. There has been some concern that this request will result in annexation of other properties in the area. This is a bond, this voluntary annexation request will not apply to neighboring properties. Any property that wishes to be annexed into the city limit must submit a voluntary petition for annexation and complete the annexation process. In North Carolina, voluntary annexation, or excuse me, involuntary annexation by the city is prohibited. In your packet, you'll find recommended motions to both approve or deny the annexation request, and staff finds this petition to be valid and recommends the approval of the ordinance to extend the corporate limit after the public hearing. I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Drew?
Could you explain to the people the zoning, we've had the conversation about the zoning of this, the purpose of this annexation, and whether or not this is annexed into the city where this project lies?
Sure. So the rezoning request will be the next item that we hear, and I can go into greater detail there. However, with the current zoning in the county, development is permitted. They'll have to follow county standards, of course, for that development, but this parcel can be developed regardless of whether or not it's developed in the county or annexed into the city and developed under our standards. Any other questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Drew. We'll start the public hearing at 6:14. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Greg Garrett, and I am the developer that has this property under contract. It's contingent upon this annexation and rezoning that will come after, I guess, this docket number. And I just wanted to say that the reason for the annexation is we do want to develop the property for residential homes. And in order to utilize your sewer, the annexation is required. I actually started the process with the county, and then we had meetings and learned that we needed to come into the city limits. And so that's, that's the purpose for this annexation request. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I have a lot more to say, but it's related to the zoning, not the annexation.
Any questions?
No, I guess we'll save them for the, for the rezoning then.
Can it be a little louder? We can't hear anybody say anything.
I said, I guess I would save my questions for the rezoning, not the annexation portion of it. The questions that I have or comments wouldn't pertain to the annexation, it would pertain to the development in itself, which would be part of the rezoning.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for the rezoning, the annexation? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Yes, sir. Come and give your name and address.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Jack Hale. I live at 222 Green Braug Drive here in Reesville, and I am at the backside of the Shannon Forest, Old Shannon Forest Community. I have about 21 acres back there, and a small horse farm that we've had for about 42 years. Let me say that I've probably been representing quite a few folks in our neighborhood. First of all, I'd like to say that we're not against development, we're not against Reesville expanding. What we are against is the amount of housing, the amount of traffic, the amount of interruption in our lives that this project is going to present. First of all, we met with Mr. Garrett last week, last Thursday, quite a few numbers were there, and we asked a few questions. One of the main questions we asked was, has anybody done a traffic study on Salem Church? Right now, Salem Church has increased the traffic, the amount of traffic that comes down Salem Church has been decreased quite a bit over the last few years. From the crossroads at, on 87, as you're coming out of Wentworth, the first stop like you come to, there's a cut across there from Wentworth Street down to Salem Church, and from Salem Church down to Highway 14. This has become a bypass for a lot of folks that are on that side of the county that don't want to come through Reesville. And so we've already seen quite a bit of change in the traffic pattern there. Where this particular development is, it's right in the middle. If you look, and I'm sure you guys have seen it, you've seen the recommendations from the developer. There's two X's out of that development. They're right in the middle of two turbo curves. We already see people coming around those curves at high rates of speed. We fear, we fear for the safety. We fear for the safety of us individuals, we fear for the change in our lifestyle as we're trying to get in and out of this thing. If you think about it, if you got from 137, I think is what Mr. Garrett said to hit a petition for, up to 150 homes, approximately 10 feet apart, with all the amenities that he has to provide in order for the city to accept it, the drainage areas and so on and so forth, it is going to be very, very congested. Price of these houses, low 300s, if they can get that for them. Says that you're probably going to have a lot of young couples, a lot of folks coming in, there's two cars. Can you imagine that small area that we're living in now, supporting an additional 150 to 300 cars trying to get out and go to work at 6 o'clock in the morning to 9 o'clock in the morning? I just think this is quite an imposition on our lives. And I don't think, to be honest with you, most of the folks that were contacted about this were the people that were in direct contact with this property boundaries. But that's not just who it affects, it affects all of the folks that's in this area. We're now, in the county, we're in a agricultural residential zoning, which means you have to have a certain amount of land in order to build a house. And that means that you can only put so many houses in a certain area. We're bypassing that by enormous numbers. I'll be honest with you, now I'm speaking for myself, and I know there's quite a few of my neighbors that are here in opposition to this. And as I said, again, we are not against development. This is not, this is something that I think is very unsafe. I think it's something that's going to distract a lot of folks' lives. And I think that, to be honest with you, I would love for you folks to consider the situation. I know that we have a lady that has a piece of property that she needs to sell, that she wants to get rid of. But we have no problems with doing this in a manner that's developing with our county's restrictions on that now. Like I said, we've already seen a lot of changes, and I would certainly appreciate you guys considering this and the danger. I'm sure, as I sit here and as I stand here before you today, that you're going to see accidents. We already have school buses coming here, we already have at the bottom of the hills, Highway 14. Now, we sit there sometimes for several minutes, waiting for the traffic to clear enough to where we can get out. I can't imagine putting this kind of traffic, trying to get back onto that highway. Now, the next thing is you're going to have to have the county, it's going to have to step in, or the state, and widen the road, or do other things that's going to really cause more problems for the people that's already there. I just think that this is quite an imposition for the folks that are not in the county and not in the city at this time, but we are close relatives to the city. We spend a lot of time in here, we spend a lot of money in the city of Reesville. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against?
I live on 121 Kingwood Road. I would be directly affected by all the houses that would back up to my house. I don't, I've been living there 50 years, 50. Oh, that makes me how old, I don't know. Anyway, it's a neighborhood. We have people who walk, there's strivers with their children in it. They have, we have people that walk up and down those, not Salem Church, but right off Salem Church where I live. Salem Church is going to be so busy, they're going to have to extend Salem Church on both sides. And the houses that are on Salem Church do not have big yards. Their houses are going to be on the road. You know, I'm sure this lady wants to sell that land, maybe she's had it as long as I've lived there, I don't know. But it is going to be a real problem for the people who live there. And the gentleman that spoke just before me doesn't live directly, oh, he lives behind, but he comes in that way. That's the way he goes to his house, is all from Salem Church. And that's the way the neighborhood is. We have a quiet neighborhood, and we don't want 300 cars. If there are 150 homes, and most homes have two cars, that's 300 cars coming in and out of there. It is going to be dangerous, it's going to be unsafe for a lot of the people who live there. I'm not against progress, just like Mr. Hale just said, but it's at the expense of the people who have lived there a long time and have bought recently because they like the neighborhood. It's not just us old folks that live there, we've got young people there, and they bought out there because it was a nice neighborhood, not busy. Please consider that. Think about us old folks and the new folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've lived on Regency Drive for 42 years, okay? I'm not for the annexation, and I'm not against it, okay? Young people need houses, and it's a new day, it's the way you built, we can't stop that. It's okay with me. I'm asking the board here, in our little stretch there on Timber Lane, Regency Drive, to put up a barrier, okay? We have 10 little kids in that little stretch there, okay? Put up a barrier to keep the cement trucks, the big trucks, the backhoes from cutting down Timber Lane and over to Regency Drive into this development, and the cement trucks, just that's the way I'm asking, until the project is finished. That's very simple. We don't want one of our little kids getting killed, it's, the truckers don't care, you know? We don't want one of those cement trucks carrying up the roads, and that's all. Thank you.
If there's no one else who would like to speak against, we will close the public hearing at...
My name is Carla Holt, and I live at 178 East Plantation Circle. My parents are Bobby and Carlene Holt, who live at 135 Timber Lane and have been there for 48 years. They live directly across the street from Mr. Miller. We have no opposition to growth because we want Reesville to be prosperous, we want people to come here, we want restaurants and shopping. They're asking to build 137 houses in a 50-acre piece of land that are going to be 10 feet apart. If it's more houses than that property can support, they're going to need everything the city would provide, water, sewer, lights, curbing, streets. How are you going to get all of that and put all these houses in this small area? There's been no traffic study, which, which is amazing that someone's going to spend this kind of money to build a project and not determine how it's going to affect the area around it with the traffic coming in and out of Salem Church Road and off of 14. We have problems now getting back into 14 at certain times of the day. It's a disruption for the whole neighborhood and all the people on Salem Church Road, not just the people whose properties touch this piece of land. I think it's a disservice to the county and the people that we chose to live in the county for many different reasons. Their property is not going to be annexed, but they're going to be directly affected by everything that happens here. I wish you would reconsider this and make it a project where it's not so many houses and it's a plus for the neighborhood, not a detriment to the neighborhood. I think it could be a fair compromise that everyone can be happy. Someone is going to get hurt on Salem Church Road before this project is finished because there's not enough room there for what's going to be coming through from 14. there's not enough room there for what's going to be coming through from 14 over to Wentworth two times a day, every morning, every afternoon. I am, I am for development, I am opposed to this development, and I feel like there are people behind me who were at the last meeting that would agree with me. And if you do agree with me, would you please stand up and show them?
I can't stand anymore, I'm standing.
Thank you. It's not just Mr. Hale and myself, all of these people don't want this to happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's no one else to speak against, we'll close the public hearing at 6:30. What is the pleasure of counsel?
This is a question for Drew. You told us before that no matter what we did today, that the county already has in place what can be done in that area, right?
So, from what I've been told, the research that's been done, there was a rezoning previously in the county, so a development will be able to go there. It will be built to county standards, it won't be built to the standard that's presented here tonight, you know, that they're requesting with the conditional rezoning, but it will be able to be developed. There will be housing there, whether it's in the county or annexed into the city and built to our standards. There will be able to be housing there.
But it could be another developer that went in there and just put apartments in, not houses, right? He could put in a thousand apartments.
Something different, potentially could be done.
Right, okay.
Whatever the county standard is on that, I can't speak to what their standard is.
Okay, that was my question.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I don't, so, I think we're a little crossed up in here, because we have two parts to this.
Yes.
I've took notes of what comments have, have responses back to those, but we're a little backwards in this proceeding, because this is for the annexation. The concerns of this that have been brought up here during this time should have been saved for the second part, which would be the zoning aspect and the development, the drawings of the develop and the concerns. So, I think it's important for you guys, if no one understands, that what we're discussing here now and what we're voting on has nothing to do with the development, the zoning of the development, the number of homes or anything whatsoever. There is a matter in which this has to be delivered. So, I'm going to say my responses to these questions, because you guys in the audience were premature with your questions, because we're discussing rezoning right now, not the development that will come after this is done next item on the agenda that she would present.
Annexation.
Annexation.
Two parts to this, I see you looking around, there's two parts to this. The annexation and then the rezoning aspect of it. That's when we'll discuss the development, the number of homes, and all of those items. That part doesn't play into this particular part right here, just so everybody understands.
I have a question.
Okay.
The public hearing has been closed. If you'll just wait till the second part. What's the pleasure of counsel?
I have a question, issue. So, according to this, since we're doing it, doing this annexation approval, it doesn't affect, we can later discuss how many houses could probably go on that property, we can do that adjustment in the next part of this, correct?
Drew, sit.
So, I just want to understand.
The next part comes out is what the zoning will allow.
And that will be addressed in that question.
That's correct.
That's correct. So, we are going to vote on the voluntary annexation?
Annexation right now, yeah. And it's understandable how it got mixed up. It's just one of those things. What's the pleasure of counsel on the annexation?
On the annexation, I would make the motion to approve the proposed voluntary annexation request.
Got a motion to approve, and we have a second in the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The next item, consideration of a conditional rezoning request for property located on Salem Church Road, Rockingham County Parcel, 155460, to assign a City of Reedsville zoning designation of Conditional Zoning Residential 6, CZR6. The applicant is Braxton Real Estate and Development Company, LLC, and the owner of the property is Judith Holstrom, docket number CZ2025-02, enclosure two. Drew.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Moore. As you stated, Braxton Real Estate Development Company, LLC, is petitioning with the consent of the current property owner to have an initial City of Reedsville zoning designation of CZR6, Conditional Zoning Residential 6, assigned to the property located at Salem Church Road, Rockingham County Parcel Number 155460. The property owner, as previously stated, is Judith Holstrom. The parcel encompasses a total combined area of 48.59 acres. Before annexation approval, the land was zoned county residential agricultural, that's RA designation, and is undeveloped. City water service is not existing or available. Water service will be provided by Dan River Water. The applicant has provided a will-serv letter from Dan River Water, stating that there is adequate capacity and pressure to accommodate the development in the area. City sewer is available in the right-of-way of North Carolina Highway 14, approximately 600 feet to the east. There are no streams on site, and the property is not located in either of the water sheds, Jordan Lake, or Troublesome Creek. The floodplain insurance grade map firm indicates no floodplains on site. Per requirement of North Carolina General Statute 160D, city staff notified all adjacent and adjoining property owners via mail and placed advance notice of all public hearings in the Rockingham Now newspaper. As you are aware, a conditional zoning request amends the zoning map with site-specific conditions incorporated into the amendment, allowing the owner and developer to place voluntary conditions on the land with the intent of restricting allowable uses or to ask for deviations from our standards. The owner and applicant get to choose which of these allowable conditions for the district, in this case, the Residential 6, R6 district, they would like to impose upon the land. For Article 5, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance, any major change that alters the density of the development, decreases compatible uses or design features, decreases pedestrian features, or changes the uses approved for the property must again return before the planning board and council for approval. Minor changes which do not rise to the level of a major change may be approved administratively by the Planning and Community Development Director. Since the planning board meeting on June 18th, 2025, the applicant has held a community meeting. The primary concern expressed by those who attended the meeting was traffic. To accommodate these concerns, the applicant has removed the right-of-way connection onto Regency Drive. So, there will be no right-of-way connection on Regency Drive. The amended site plan that is displayed before you hear that shows the removal of that connection. It will now be a cul-de-sac that does not connect to Regency Drive. The only two connections into the development will be on Salem Church Road. And they're only required to have two connections for the number of units that are being proposed. Approval of the concept plan does not issue any approval for construction. A preliminary plat review must still be completed by the technical review committee, along with any applicable construction plan drawing review. The owner and applicant have requested to limit the allowable land uses to those shown on the concept plan, which includes single-family detached dwellings only. So, these will just be single-family dwellings, no multifamily. The following development conditions are also requested. The concept plan shows 137 dwelling units, however, the applicant is requesting an option to develop up to 150 units. If density is approved at 150 units, staff may approve no greater than increase of the 150 unit allotment. Provisions of a 20-foot wide vegetative buffer is also being offered around the property boundary where possible per the attached concept plan. So, that will be the green that's indicated on the plan. So, you'll have it at the southwestern corner and at the south, and then again at the north along Salem Church, where those existing residential properties are. There is not a buffer provided to the eastern side on the south, because there is a stormwater pond there. So, there will not be a buffer there. They are also proposing lot-dimensional standards to be, as shown on the concept plan, with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, with 20-foot front yard setbacks, 20-foot rear yard setbacks, and 5-foot side yard setbacks, with 10-foot side yard setbacks on corner lots. So, that would just be on the side that fronts a street. The proposed conditional rezoning aligns with goal number three of the reasonable land development plan to expand housing. This includes expanding the housing stock and providing a variety of housing options. The property is located in Growth Management Area 4, the rural growth management area, which surrounds the city's periphery, primarily encompassing areas to the northwest and east of the city. DMA4 is predominantly characterized by residential development in undisturbed natural areas with ample vacant land for new development. According to the land development plan, DMA4 also prioritizes the expansion of residential development, providing an existing transportation network that is capable to accommodate growth. Additionally, residential development within DMA4 is adjacent to urban areas and services. Staff finds the proposed conditional rezoning to be consistent with the reasonable land development plan, reasonable and in the public interest based on the aforementioned information provided in this report and the attached statements of reasonableness and consistency. Planning staff recommends the proposed rezoning be approved. I'll take any questions you have.
Any questions of Drew? Drew, could you elaborate again on the situation that's in hand in reference to the property in the eye of the county, as it has been looked at?
So, in regard to the existing county designation?
Yeah.
Sure. I'll do my best. So, I'm not a county planner, I don't know what the county's standards are, per se, and I can't interpret their standards. But the existing designation is a residential designation. It's called residential agricultural, but it is a residential designation that's primarily used for residential development. So, as it stands, it could be developed for a residential subdivision. It would be developed to the county's standards, whatever those may be. I don't know what those lot sizes are, but it could be developed to county standards, and there could be a subdivision there.
So, indeed, it could be apartments or something like, to that effect?
I don't know what the county allows in that designation, but it could be residential development, per the county standard.
But without us doing anything, you just said that's what could happen, because the county can make that decision, not us.
Correct, yep. It's a residential zoning district, it's a county district, but it is a residential district. So, regardless of whether or not it's a city designation, it can be developed to residential standards for the county.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Drew.
No, I'm just going to wait, I've got my list of answers and waiting on the questions from the rest of the people.
All right, thank you, Drew. Public hearing will start at 6:43. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for?
Good evening again. My name is Greg Gere, and my office is at 6420 Hampton Knoll Road, that's in Clemens, North Carolina, 27102. And thank you for making time for me today in this petition. I'm thrilled to be before you finally. It's been a process trying to figure out, I'm the county, I'm Reedsville county, and I think we've got all that sorted out, I hope, and I'm, you know, delighted to be before you today. I, some people may think this is funny, but I'm kind of, I'm on a mission. We have a housing crisis in our state, in our country. There's not enough supply, there's not enough inventory. We've done an incredible job as a state, and you, as City of Reedsville, bringing great jobs to this area, but we don't have the housing for it, and it is a crisis. And so, yes, I'm a for-profit developer, I'll be straight up about that, but I also feel that I'm doing my duty in trying to find communities that can house these folks. I'm talking about workforce housing, workforce housing. With a lot of these jobs that are being created, they're not going to be filled with people already in the community. I mean, there's people that are coming from outside and moving in. And this type of development is exactly what we need in our state, and I would argue that what we need here in Reedsville, that's ultimately for your decision, but I certainly want to make the case. Now, what I'm proposing with this rezoning and the sketch plan that you have before you is a residential subdivision. It's very similar to one that I've just recently completed with a partner, Charles Rechstraw, some of you may know him, but in Mayodan, it's known as Rivers Edge, and there, it was right at, actually, 99 houses there. And it was a very successful subdivision, and we learned that that product was very much meeting a need in the marketplace. And so, the homes there started off in the upper 200s, now this development started two years ago. So, that pricing is now pushed over 300 and into the mid-3s, really. And my plan for this property is to basically replicate what we did in Mayodan, do it here in Reedsville. And the starting price of the homes, as we can tell, it's a very volatile time in the economy and tariffs and everything going on, but best we can tell, the homes would start off in the 300, low 300s. It's kind of like buying a car, we got base pricing, then you come in and you pick out all the things you want. My builder has a design gallery where they come and make all kinds of decisions, and those prices quickly elevate. If you've ever bought a car, you know how that works, and so, buying a house is not much different. Full disclosure, at this point, I am talking to D.R. Horton, which is the largest builder in the country, to be the builder, to buy these lots for me. I would buy this land, I am the developer-owner of Braxton Real Estate, so when you, you know, we're looking in eyes, you know, we're the decision-makers, right? And so, I think that's important, it's how I've always built my business. I want to be, I'm not hiding from anybody, you know? I believe I do good, honest day work, and I don't have anything to hide from or be ashamed of. So, anyways, but I would, I would buy the land, put in all the infrastructure, and then D.R. Horton would come in and buy the lots and start doing the vertical construction, building the houses. So, that's my plan. The plan is for four phases of development, so to say that this is going to happen overnight is not true. We're looking at maybe the first phase being around 40, 40 lots, so, you know, and then the next phase would be 30, and 25, and 20, it's all on the map. But, so I'm going to do this in phases. I don't have the ability to come in and put all those roads in at one time. I'm going to develop as the builder sells the homes, so it would be paced, you know? We just don't want to get ahead of ourselves, we want to get, you know, ahead of the skis, but that's never a good, good situation. And so, I have met with the community, and they were very, very adamant that they did not want a connection to Shannon Hills, or Shannon Forest subdivision. The original plan was via Regency, it's currently a road that's, or right-of-way that's been stubbed into this property for quite some time, and we originally were showing the connection there. I spoke with Drew, she seemed to think that the staff would be amenable to making that change, and so, the plan that you have before you tonight is actually a direct result from meeting with the neighborhood, hearing their concerns, and doing what I can do. Their life is going to change. I can't, I cannot look to, look at you in the eyes and say that their life's not going to change. It's going to change. It's progress, and this type of housing is what we need and the way of the future. I mean, people think that, you know, 10 feet apart is a big deal. Well, that's number one, a minimum, it could be more. We're just saying, if we build the largest house footprint next to each other, there would only be 10. But who knows what, what house plans the customers will choose? They're ultimately the ones that will choose what house plans get built on each lot. They're ultimately the ones that will choose what house plans get built on each lot. And so, I would like to point that out. But, you know, I do the 10-foot, you know, building separation all over the triad. So what I'm asking you is not anything that I do any different anywhere else in the triad. And I have developed for over 25 years all over the triad. Mevin, Gibsonville, Winston-Salem, Clemmons, Kernersville, Greensboro, I mean, you name them, I've developed there. So one thing I would like to mention, we do have some conditions that have come with this rezoning request. Currently, your UDO talks about your minimum design standard for your residential streets are curb and gutter and 36-foot wide street. That is very large. I don't build that large of a street anywhere all over the triad. That's an extremely large, wide road that costs a lot for the developer, which then has to be passed on down to the homebuyer. But furthermore, whenever it's time for that road to be maintained, I mean, it won't be anytime soon, but you know, 20, 30 years from now, that's a big, big extra cost on your maintenance budget for your streets. And I would like to maybe just ask you to explore what your street standards are in the city of Winston. Most of my development's in Forsyth County. In the city of Winston, they have curb and gutter and 27 feet back-to-back. So you basically have that part of that 27-foot is your actual curb and gutter. It's a valley, so you can even kind of go up on it without going over a curb. But anyways, so in my request for the rezoning is I'm asking that you would allow a variance to your current standards, which is that 36-foot wide street. I understand that there's been a project recently approved that had a variance for that, and I'm asking for that same variance. And furthermore, if you would be interested in exploring other ways of doing it, I mean, like I said, I'd develop all over the triad. In this situation, I don't even know that curb and gutter is a necessity for this development. It's certainly to handle the stormwater wasn't. My plan that was going to the county was a ribbon pavement road or ditch line, no curb and gutter, and it was 20-foot wide pavement. And that's their standard. So we want to talk about county standards. That's a big difference in cost. And cost matters, especially in today's environment. I really am trying to create workforce housing. And if that cost keeps creeping up, then we really narrow the market down to a certain type of buyer, a certain type of home, and then the pace of development, you know, will be a lot slower. It won't benefit any of us, in my opinion. I will point out, because I think it is significant since we just approved the annexation, we're looking at creating about a $45 million tax base from this project. That's, you know, 150 homes times 300,000 average, you know, price. I think that's conservative, but your tax department ultimately will be the one to assess what the value is. But it's quite frankly impossible to build new construction homes, you know, and sell them for under 300,000 right now. That's just the environment we're in. So I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Before I sit down, I would love to introduce the property owner, Ms. Judith Holstrom, and she has just some remarks to say. And then also, I wanted to let you know that I'm here with my engineers, and they would be able to answer any of your technical questions that you might have. Thank you so much for your time.
You want to have any questions?
I have some questions while you're up there. Since you're the developer, and I understand what you said a minute ago, that you're in it for the money. We know that. You wouldn't have a business if you weren't. But one of the things that I do is, and sit up here as a counsel, I got to look at best interest for the city of Reedsville, of annexing this property and what's going to be built on that property. And one of the concerns that I heard you say was the builder. And that's a big concern for me because I'm not a fan of D.R. Horton. And I don't know, is this the builder you use on all your property, or you go back and forth with different ones?
Yes, so I have a portfolio of builders. And D.R. Horton, I do know that they had some issues a couple of years ago. They've really cleaned up their act. I would just encourage you to look at the River's Edge project.
I have. I've been there.
Okay, great.
Because we voted on a different location, and it came down to D.R. Horton is supposedly going to be the builder there. So I wanted to go look at some property to see what these homes are like.
Right.
Then I did some research, owned the company, and saw some concerns. And this is just my opinion, they may have theirs. And they may be the biggest builder in the country, doesn't mean it's the best. So my concerns and some of the reviews that I saw is pretty much what it looked like is they build them cheap and sell them high. And a lot of our own slabs, I don't know, is this what's going to be out there, slab homes?
Yes.
I know D.R. Horton's no two ears for that. So I have some concerns with that. And the other is, I'm very familiar with Salem Church Road, and I understand what everybody's saying with the entrances and exits going out at those locations. When you do your development, do you do the traffic studies?
So my extent of the traffic was I contacted my traffic engineer who has access to all of NC DOT's data, and there was no data for Salem Church Road. In other words, it wasn't even, you know, enough to even hit trip their register to keep track of the data. They said at Canterbury, there was a study in 2016 that said there was 160 trips coming out from Canterbury on to Old Salem Church Road.
And with what you're hearing from the residents out there that's going to be buttoned up against this property, do you ever take into consideration the number that you're planning to do and scale back to try to satisfy or compromise some of these issues? Do you ever consider that, or have you ever done that, or do you stick with your guns and build what you say you're going to build?
Right. I mean, I try to be a straight shooter. That's why I'm not, you know, just not going to get up here and pretend, oh yeah, I could get another. I mean, D.R. Horton's the builder that I had kind of in mind for here. I don't have a contract with them. I can talk to other builders, but I think at the end of the day, I do envision a D.R. Horton community here. And I believe, like I said, they have had some bad remarks over the years, and I know that they've spent a lot of effort in cleaning that up. One of the things I particularly like about them is they sod. Like, I'm just, I really like to drive my communities and be proud. And when you seed and straw your lawns, you're talking about three, four, five-year process, and you got to be diligent to kind of keep it up. They come in and sod the front and the back, which is a big deal. It's a big expense. And I really believe that it makes for a very nice project, and it helps folks, you know, have an instant, you know, clean yard and not have to mess around, you know, overseeding and, you know, back and forth, back and forth. It was a good move on their part. I don't know if that answered your question, but I mean, sometimes there are occasions where, you know, there's some negotiating on the size. I think 150 is probably an aggressive number. But right now, you know, 139 is the number of homes, and my financials on this project, you know, really won't make sense if I go below the 139. Thank you.
I have a question, ma'am. I have a question. We have talked to a lot of people that are interested in homes in the Reedsville area, and we're finding they want smaller homes and smaller yards, and they don't want multi-level. So what is your plans for that?
Well, that's actually very consistent with what we are finding in the neighborhoods that I currently have selling. The ranch homes are very, very popular. And one thing that we can do with this neighborhood is we actually have a good bit of depth on the lots. The width is a little more challenging, but quite frankly, the width is really important to a developer. Because I can't stress this enough, the cost to build a road is very, very expensive. We're talking $1,300 a foot, a running foot to build that road. And so, if I could have more narrow lots, but they be deeper, it helps us achieve a price point that the market wants. It helps us achieve a product that the market likes, which are ranches, but they're going to be a lot deeper. You know, they're going to go back into the lot more. But yes, ranch homes, and if you, you know, I'm sure you noticed when you drove into River's Edge, that there are a lot of ranch homes. We're going to build what the market wants. I can promise you that. We will build what the market wants, and that right now is a hot button. And I know I did say in the neighborhood meeting that it's a lot of young folks, but what we are finding is really more of a mix, especially with those ranch homes. You're finding folks that are looking to kind of downsize. They don't want to deal with steps. And so, I think this will probably ultimately be more of a mixed community if my other subdivision is any indication of that.
Thank you.
Have you considered those concerns about the entry and the exit? The curving going around being a danger or a blind spot? Have you considered that? Or can you change the entries and exits to make it more safer?
Yes, so Mr. Hale, I believe, had that concern. And what I would like to point out is that we actually did take that into consideration. He is correct. There is a curve there on Salem Church Road, and we've put our entrances on either side, so there's a long straightaway. If we could pull up the map.
Map, Drew, is that a long?
By NC DOT standards, you know, you've got 300, 400, 500 feet of sight distance on either side. And I can even have my civil engineer. He designs projects all the time. He can, you know, speak to that as well. But if you look at the map, you can see there is a big bow, right? If you look where the green landscape buffer that I'm going to provide to the residents, if you look at that, that's where the danger is because it's right there at the curve. But we've pushed our entrances off to either end of the project, so you've got a nice Would you give me a quick?
Could you have a scale where you could say what that distance is?
This is Aiden Stolffus. He's my civil engineer, and he can speak to that real quick.
As far as the stop and sight distance, or just the sight distance that DOT requires, this is probably 55. They designed for 60. So they want to see at least 600 feet, 500 to 600 feet from basically where you can start seeing a car until that entrance, just so you can have the proper maneuver. The DOT has not looked at this from a driveway standpoint. They will look at it during the design stage. If they want us to push this entrance away from that curve even more, they'll require it at that point. And we do have flexibility on the sight length. Push these entrances farther away from the curve if we need to. And that'll just be part of the design phase, but we feel like we have enough sight distance there to meet the DOT requirements.
Sounds like you're saying you've got more than enough. They're designing at 60, you're designing at 55, you said?
We were designing, it would be a 60 mile an hour sight distance.
That's what you have now?
That's correct.
The speed limit's like 45.
Yeah. That's why I'm saying the speed limit's lower than you said.
The speed limit, typically you design for five miles over. It's the speed limit. But in our case, we do have a lot of sight distance there.
Any other questions?
While the engineer's up here, there was a couple comments that was made earlier that I think we can address with you here. I've got notes covered all over as they were talking, so just bear with me. So there was a discussion about the traffic study. There was also, a couple of these are going to hit, so I just want to touch base on them as we go through these. The traffic study was one of them, and the other I had here. So how do you put houses in this area this small, you know, and has anybody looked at that, you know, so forth? Was a question that was asked. So typically, as you said, when, once you apply with DOT, they're going to take a look at these entryways. They're going to take a look at all this. These are preliminary drawings. At that point in time, that's when DOT's going to look at their road. They're going to look at their traffic count, or whether they need a traffic count, if they feel that this 150 has an impact. These traffic studies and the flow of the traffic will be determined in the permitting phase of when you're applying for that. So these people are asking, you know, this particular question, but the traffic study doesn't come to the city. So if a change needs to be made, that would be done at DOT's level, not the city nor the county's level if it's not suitable, you know, for that. Also, we laid out the 139 houses, 150 houses in here. And so, when, as we learned this from the last month's previous housing development in Ashcroft, once the final engineering is done, there's possibilities that there could be less, there could be 120 homes that could go in here, whether that makes a difference to anyone in here or not. Obviously, he says 139 doesn't make sense to him financially after that, or anything below that. Same thing we had that when we granted the up to 150 homes in the Ashcroft subdivision then. So all of these are preliminaries and are subject to significant change. At that point in time, once this is approved, that is when you would spend the actual big dollars to make this determination, these engineering drawings and stuff. So I just, I kind of want you here, the public to understand is $200,000, it could be $250,000, it could be $300,000 for engineering drawings for a subdivision of this. So developer nor landowner is going to go spend $300,000, is going to spend $40,000 on a traffic study, and then come in here and roll the dice and ask, hey, can I put this here? So a lot of these concerns, I feel from a safety aspect, I want people to understand why we don't have these answers now, and that then these answers come after the fact because that's when the money is invested into these developments and into these homes. I just want you to clarify that or speak to that.
Yeah, as far as the driveway permits goes, what we do is we stake the driveway, centerline the driveway on the ground. We would meet with the DOT. They're out there with a stopwatch. They're looking at traffic coming around the corner, and they say, can I see it, can I not? Sometimes we have to do a lot of clearing, and sometimes we even have to scale the ditches back just so you can get sight distance on one side or the other. And so, there may be improvements that they have.
Correct. The point of that is, what we have here is a concept drawing. It's not the Bible. There are processes and there are phases that then by emergency personnel, state, DOT, whatever the standards are, that these are then addressed, you know? So everybody wants to know, why aren't you? So I want to make sure everybody understands that no one's ignoring these particular questions, but they do come, and they do play a variant, and they do play a effect on the size of the development, the road positions and such things as that, you know?
Let's correct this. As far as the lot count goes, we don't have a really good topo out there. I mean, typically, we fly with a drone, or we have a field-run survey. Right now, we just have county contours, which they're pretty good, and they're getting a lot better. But a lot of things can change because the area's wooden, and you're not, can't see below the canopy a lot of times to see what you actually have on the ground. And that's why we need just a little bit of flexibility. It could be more, could be less on lot count.
Correct. Once you get in there, you've opened that property up, you start your grain, there could be soil issues, compaction issues, which would then limit and omit particular areas. It all could be, in a perfect world, fine, but nine times out of 10, as we know, it's not. So that, these numbers could drastically reduce, but the, in his terms, best case would be 150, you know? So we don't know what's in there until you start these samples and you start these engineered drawings. So I think it's important for people to understand, you're not going to go do all this. You're not going to invest a half a million, $600,000 just to figure out whether you can do it or not first. You need to know you can do it, then you spend the money on it. And I hope that makes sense to everybody out here. That's all the questions I have. I just want to touch base on how you get to these traffic counts and all that. But what I want to do is I want to go down through this list of questions. list of questions afterwards, if somebody else wants to ask a different question, but I don't think we need to get up and repeat the same questions, 'cause I, I wrote them down. There was some questions here, uh, a comment made about the price of the homes, as if these homes would be cheap homes. A three hundred thousand dollar home in this day and time wants a bare minimum of twenty-three hundred and ninety-two dollar and twenty-six cent house payment. I just crunched the numbers on a mortgage calculator to five percent interest. That's less taxes and insurance. So, these homes are not cheap, they're very expensive, and anybody that works out here today in this modern world knows how hard money is to come by, before, probably roughly with taxes and insurance, we're looking at about twenty-seven hundred dollar a month housing payment that would be into these homes. Oh, so I, I wanted to clarify the three hundred. Then there was a question that asked, how do you put these houses in this area this small? Well, if you look all over, as they've stated, these houses are put in areas like this, it's, it's similar to a townhome, but you have less area, but you do have a little bit of yard, and most of the young people don't wanna do the work. As we know, there's a shortage in the workforce, so if they don't wanna work, you think they wanna come home and mow grass and maintain a home? So, this is the way, and these are the homes that people want, is these type homes, and they don't wanna maintain an acre yard, they don't wanna maintain an acre and a half yard, uh, no more, they don't want five acres. So, that's my response to that particular question, uh, and so there was, we were having discussions about the rezoning here. So I had received a, a call, because this piece of, this zoning here was brought to the city originally about three months ago. I was the one that made a motion to deny that request until further information was given. The counties, the county supports this development and requested that if we would not annex it, if we would provide sewer to this. So, if, if not, we would partner with the ci- with the county, provide sewer to this property, and you're gonna, and it's gonna happen anyways, because we have a partnership, the county, in terms of providing sewer up and down corridors with the county. So, they would get the sewer, it just made more sense to the county to create a subdivision like this and exit, let us be responsible for trash pickup and all these items that so forth that you get. So, whether we rezone this, or whether we took this in, I'm ninety-nine percent sure it would happen anyways, but under different circumstances, you know? Uh, so, I wanted to touch, I wanna make sure I hit everybody's comments, you know? Um, the, the, the other thing is, is you guys were talking about three hundred cars a day. The, a development of this magnitude can take three to five years, it can take three to six years, so a- as he was stating, it will be done in phases. I would say, look at reading for subdivision, look at how long it took to build something, something of, of that caliber, or something that everyone here may be familiar with, the Carter-Redd subdivision on Reed School Road, look how many years that subdivision took. So, you're not gonna have this impact of, wow, today, there's three hundred additional cars in there, and if three hundred additional cars is too much, they will come out in the DOT, uh, study, when they apply for their roadways and permits into this subdivision, whatever DOT comes up with. So, that would, I just, I wanna make that answer to that. Um, in terms of the traffic, touch base on that. Um, you guys were concerned with the entryway into your neighborhood through Regency Drive, you closed the entire subdivision off, there's no traffic coming into your development, so I think that handles what the gentleman over there made the request about guardrails and, and safety aspects and barriers being put up. The only effects of this neighborhood that you would see would be the traffic there on Salem Church Road. No one's coming in your neighborhood now, no one can enter in your neighborhood, and there's a twenty-four, twenty-foot buffer based off his design that separates this development from your guys, from your guys' neighborhood as, as well. Oh, one of the notes that I made here, we were discussing Salem Church Road and traffic and, and all that, so I, I was sitting here thinking, I want you guys to think about this, you got Van Street Extension, think about the cars that rip and run up Van Street Extension daily, and the homes that are lined up and, up and down that road, and the people and the traffic trying to come in and out. I don't think there would be any more traffic and there any more impacted homes on here in Salem Church Road than what we already see, and I haven't seen anybody killed over there lately, there was a fatality there about fifteen years ago, but that was due to a drunk driver, to the best of my knowledge, we haven't had anymore. So, I wanted to think about a few roads and comparisons to add, to, to put on with this. Um, and then we also, the gentleman here talked about housing needed and the workforce here. We've got workforce vacancies here, we have two factories that just opened in the city of Greensville, there's five hundred job vacancies available, roughly, between Farmina, uh, Farmina and the baby wipes plant. I don't know what job vacancies are available at the other factories, I know a lot of them are hiring. You have the, um, Purina Tepoo, you have a lot of job vacancies in Danville, you have a lot in the Greensboro area, and Greensville is poised to grow with these developments, because you have Interstate seven eighty-five, you have twenty-nine, and you have all of these accesses that are pointing everybody in all these different directions of the job available market. And when you look at that on a map, we sit dead center of everything, we're fifteen to twenty minutes from everywhere. So this isn't gonna be the last development comes, and it certainly is not, surely is not the first development. But everyone, as you guys said, we want restaurants, and we want places to go, we don't wanna have to go to Greensboro. We'll, if we put one acre lots everywhere, where are we gonna sustain enough people to keep these businesses open? Because we don't have enough people to sustain businesses in Greensville right now, you can't keep a restaurant open, so you can't have your cake in one hand and eat it in the other. So, and I also believe that a property owner has rights as well, you know, and, and, and yes, should we consider the effects of our, our neighbors, but, well, what limit do we draw that line when whoever owns this property, whoever has bought it, and whoever has invested their money, do we consider that as well? So that's the way that I take this whole situation. I hope I answered every question that was asked, if not, feel free to ask again. Thank you.
Are you speaking for?
I'm speaking.
Are you speaking for?
No, I'm in.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for?
Evening, Your Honor and council members, my name is Judy Schofield Holstrom. I'm the only child of my father and his wife, Thelma and Henry Schofield Junior, and my father was the son of, uh, Margaret and Henry Schofield Senior, who lived on this property since the early nineteen hundreds. The house was built in nineteen-ten, and they were the only residents since then, they have both passed away. Um, my parents have both passed away, but they made an agreement with the lady that was living in the house, that she could stay there until she passed away, which she did in two thousand nineteen. I am the sole heir of the property, and the only child, so I have no descendants or anything. Um, I'm not getting any younger, so I decided to go ahead and put this, the property up for sale, and with Mr. Garrett and Braxton Real Estate, I've been very pleased with everything that they've shown me. I know that the numbers are a little questionable right now, but, um, I know that, um, my, my grandparents pay taxes every year, and since this property is being annexed into the city, the city will be re-rewarded from all the taxes from the residents that live in this complex, however many that may be. Um, I guess that's about all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else who'd like to speak for? Anyone who'd like to speak against? Name and address.
My name is Matt Smith, I live on one-nine-six, Kingwood Road. My question is, I'm a father, I have a one-year-old, I have a wife, me and her both work. It's all we can do to make a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar house payment, along with a car. Now, we talk about these jobs in Greensville that is going to be able for people to afford three hundred thousand dollar houses. I work for NCDOT, there's no way I could afford it with my wife working. So, there remains concerns, where are all these people coming from that's gonna be able to afford these houses? 'Cause the media don't seem like it's benefiting Greensville, it seems like people moving out of Greensboro to bigger cities coming down here to get lower tax rates, and then they're still driving to Greensboro working, making thirty, forty dollars an hour, while people in Greensville's only making twenty. That's my main concern.
So, do you, do you know how, uh, factories determine the wages in order to increase the pay of jobs? You're speaking of Greensville's pay versus the pay of the jobs in Greensville, so when you have a low-populated area, you're not gonna get a forty dollar an hour factory to come in here, because there's no one here to fulfill the jobs, so that's why they're there, where there's an abundance of the job opportunities. When, when you increase the population and you increase the pool to pull from in order to fulfill these, you will then be a drawing card to companies that pay more, instead of getting a, and I will use Farmina as an example, their thirty dol- their starting pay is like twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars an hour. There's two hundred and fifty jobs available there right now that they're hiring. That job, the job market at Farmina started out roughly about a hundred and seventy-five jobs, it's already increased to two hundred and fifty, uh, vacancies available, that's a twenty-eight, roughly twenty-eight dollar an hour job, from my understanding. The, uh, pay that they have been negotiating with experienced help was about thirty-one to thirty-two dollars an hour there. And so the way that you raise these wages is, is, is an increase of population, and then the factories will come. But if you have no one here to fulfill these jobs, a factory is not gonna come here and ask for five hundred employees and pay forty dollars an hour, because they're not here, they don't have anybody to choose from. Does that make sense?
Yes and no. 'Cause, uh, so these people moving from Greensboro, they gonna come to work for Greensville? They gonna quit their jobs in the bigger cities that pay more?
How do you know that everyone's moving from Greensboro?
I'm not saying they are, I'm just saying.
Could potentially start to.
There's not, there's not jobs here that support these three hundred thousand dollar homes, that, that's the bare minimum.
Did you, did you hear what I said about the seven eighty-five corridor, the twenty-nine, one fifty-eight, the, the, uh, the growth that's taking place in Danville and all the job opportunities? So, so when you look at these different areas as they develop out, there are some areas that sustain the homes, the shopping and the living, and certain areas that sustain the jobs in the factories that come there, that not all area is full of an abundance of everything. So, we're positioned in the center of these close commutes, whether it be to the airport, whether it be to Danville, whether it be to Virginia, or Greensboro, or Burlington, or whatever, which has set Greensville up to be the place to live, not work, you know, in, in terms of it just being a place for jobs, you know? But, as you've increased population here, you do increase the call for jobs, as we have seen, we've got a lot of vacancies right now here.
Okay, well, I've seen the population increase, but my pay rate hasn't increased. So, it's kinda jeopardizing.
Pay rates from the state, though.
I understand.
Not from the city.
But it, we, we've increased in population significantly, you would think pay rate would increase as well, if that's your, your argument, that the pay rate's gonna go up with a hundred and thirty-nine more houses coming in. I don't see that happening. I don't see nobody working here in Greensville being able to afford three hundred thousand houses. That's my opinion.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's everybody's, everybody's entitled to, you know, and houses do sell, uh, houses, that, that, we have a realtor right here, there's a mu- there's a, a demand for actually more expensive houses, uh, than the three hundred thousand dollar threshold. As a matter of fact, I'm building ten on eighty-seven and Yaw Road, they're gonna, I'm gonna ask five hundred thousand dollars for, and I guarantee you that they will sell within a week or two, you know, so.
My question is, are we gonna do this? There's no, there's no land left to develop on? You gonna knock down every tree there is in the county? Do we need trees?
Well, I don't think you're gonna do this kind of development.
Everywhere I turn, I see a house going up, and it's just right on top of one another. There's no fields, there's no farming going on no more, just house on top of house on top of house. I mean, that's a doom to our, to ourselves, we're just dooming ourselves.
Potentially.
Oh, yes, sir.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against?
Dr. Mintz, uh, two-thirteen Timber Lane. Uh, just, uh, thinking about the comments that I've heard from these folks here, looking at the map for the very first time, uh, with some experience in this, from my education and my business venture, and thank you for your comments here, that's helpful for us to understand where you're coming from. But looking at the map and looking at the high density of this area with two access, two access on Salem Drive, surprises me with the concerns that these folks are having. It looks like it's a very high density for putting that strain on the community itself, particularly up at Salem Drive. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
I'm sorry, sir, I did that for a minute.
Dr. Mintz. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against?
My name's Stephen Peterman, live at two-six-three Kingwood Road. Um, as you showed on the map, my property bugged up right next to the subdivision. Uh, talked about a twenty-foot buffer zone, put this hat back on, 'cause I'm involved on TV. But it, this twenty-foot buffer zone is great, why they're doing it, uh, it, it, you know, if the housing building is gonna come, I do think there should be some type of restrictions put in place. Um, Shannon Forest, we own the community, own the neighborhood, we've been a quiet neighborhood ever since I bought a house down there, and my brother bought a house down there, my mother has a house down there, my daughter has a house down there, it's all of us down there. Um, I don't know how to get to here, my dad lives on Kingwood, but there's a wooded line that bugs up to King, uh, to this new subdivision that they are trying to get rid of. Um, you start disturbing land, trees start falling. They're gonna clear that land and disturb our tree line, and those, those trees are gonna start falling on our homes. That's, I think, some type of restrictions on bigger buffer area needs to be put in place. Secondly, no one's talking about water drainage. Water share comes several times down Kingwood, and when it rains very hard, we know it, because we have a creek running through our front doors. So now you're gonna add more pavement. Like I said, don't know anything about the, the civil part, the civil engineering part of it, the drainage part of it, but that needs to be addressed as well, if it's gonna happen. Restrictions does need to be put in place. That's, and that is a safety issue with these tree lines, we have very old trees, very huge trees, that, you, you know what, you didn't gotta disturb it, they already fall. Uh, two has failed on my neighbor's yard. Uh, one struck his building. So, every, you know, it, it doesn't take a rock scientist to figure out and start clearing land, trees. Trees start falling. They will fall. You keep them killing by root system, or the winds will knock them over. And our houses sit very close to these trees. And they're not just little trees. They're huge old trees, hickory trees, whatever you may be. That does not change. If the housing development's going to happen, I do think these restrictions need to be put in place.
I think every concern, with the exception of the tree line is addressed. Stormwater, all that's addressed by the civil engineers. There's a stormwater retention pond designed in here. And that's the whole purpose in an engineered design and all this is to control the water and where the water goes in the neighborhood. And whatever the lay of the land is, will determine how all this is graded and the exact location of this retention pond that will hold all that stormwater.
So, all our storm drains will go to that retention pond?
Yes. That's designed right here in this center common area. So, everything would have to grade and come to here. That's the way the whole development, once it's cleared, once they do the topography studies, as he was talking about, to determine that. You can't just come in and clear land and just be picking stick, you know?
No, no.
The homes there, you know? There's a 20-foot buffer, you know, in terms of those trees. And when they're going to come in and cut those trees down, then we dig the stumps up around it. They're just going to come in and just start bulldozing trees down. A logger comes in, cuts the trees, loads them on a trailer, takes them out. And then an excavator will come in and dig around those stumps and remove them from the ground. And then they will grade across there.
That's what I'm saying. When that happens, these big trees left standing after... You take a tree in a forest, you got a lot of trees. They have shallow root systems. You start clearing land, that shallow root system's not going to support that tree. And when you have a big wind come through, it's going to blow up those trees, which is, my house is very close to a wood mine. It's going to fall right on my house, my neighbor's house, you know, so on. That's the safety concern of mine. I asked that be a bigger buffer line, or I really don't have a solution at this time. I don't. It's just a concern of mine.
Yeah. I guess an engineer would have to take a look at that. I couldn't make an answer to that. I do just want to make one final statement here. You know, everybody wants growth. Everybody here said they wants growth. But one thing everybody here doesn't want is it in their backyard. They want it in somebody else's. And so, you drew the lucky number, as far as I'm concerned. Because if this was somewhere else and this was denied, you guys would be talking about how crazy we was and how broke the city is and why did we turn this development down and how this one's kids can't find a house because there's no houses on the market here for sale. But you want it, but you don't want it right here. And they just don't get to choose that way. It's where the people who are willing to invest and build. We had the same conversation with Ashcroft. Ashcroft didn't want the development that came behind them. This is where you have to know your surroundings, know the zoning that is around you, and know, hey, if I'm living right here, I want to make sure in this circumference area that no one can get to me. Because that's the only way to secure your privacy or your partial property. I guarantee you, none of you in here want your neighbors coming and telling you what to do at your house. And if they do, you go back inside, you tell your husband and your wife that they need to mind their own business because that's your property and you pay the taxes there. The way I look at it is, this is her property. She's paying the taxes. If he buys it, it's his property. And the development has to go somewhere here. And this is just the chosen location of these individuals, you know? And that's sad, but that's just the way that it is, you know? So...
I'm an issue with growth. I have an issue with growth. I don't. I just want to... All someone come in there, make a buck and leave and... Like I said, you know, I'm beating a dead horse off by the trees. I'm just using it for an example. And leave. And then I'm responsible for a tree falling on my house. That's what I'm saying. Like I said, I don't beat a dead horse.
I don't see how that's going to happen. Because they develop land, they develop land all over the place. You know, and I sat here and crunched some numbers earlier, the cost to put this development in, as well as the cost to purchase this, and then the $300,000 price point. There's not a large profit margin to be made here. If you took $50,000 a lot after you broke and put all this infrastructure in, you're talking about $6.9 million to put this infrastructure in. $1,300 a foot, the man just gave you all that information. There's not a billion dollars to be made here. If there was, he would have developed one parcel and retired. He wouldn't be developing multiple parcels over a 25-year period, you know? So, I think we're all beating the dead horse. I don't have an issue with it. I've laid out what I think and how I think it is. And some may agree or disagree, you know, with it. But they're developing, building all over, and engineers are drawing, and engineers are doing this. If that was the case, I believe we would have... It would be all over the news that they developed this land and trees were falling all over these existing homes. And we don't hear that. And I've been in the building business for 20 years, and I've never recalled that to happen. And I certainly don't think, and I apologize if that's your concern, but I certainly don't think that that would be a reason, constitute a reason for me to not support this development. I'm not asking not to support it. I'm asking for restrictions imposed. So, that would be the engineer to think about those in his drawings. Your mark.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against?
Hello, my name is Jeff Finch. I'm not saying I'm against it. Actually, I'm for it. I want to see the development and everything work out. But I own, like, I'm for the first four lots going up Salem Church Road. And the map don't seem to be accurate because it's not straight going the way to look down and see the road. This turn is soon to get on 14th coming around. You have to get out there quick so you don't get hit. Same way coming back the other way. I own another property there that I got renters. And you have to get out there quick then. So, I wouldn't, I'm not against it. I was just more or less looking to the point of making it safer. What can we do to make it safer?
That'd be DOTs.
It would be their job. So, I would strongly recommend we look at that because if we just look at it in the map now, it's not actually the way it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's wait till this lasts. Hey, ma'am, do you still want to come?
My name is Paula Holt. I live at 178 East Plantation Circle. The only question that I have... I was at the meeting at Salem Church with these folks in that development, and their major concern was the opening of Regency Drive into this development. My question is, what happens and what assurances do they have that this doesn't get changed? He took it off. He's put a green buffer. Perfect. What if the DOT says two entrances is not enough, and now you have to have three? Well, they've been told that it's not going to be one. Do they have any assurance that it's not going to change? Because you've stated that the DOT comes in, they do the study, they make the decisions, they say how far from the curb. That's really not the issue for the neighbors. The issue was coming through Regency Drive and these cars, this amount of cars, coming through a development.
As Drew stated earlier, every zoning ordinance has particular regulations. This zoning ordinance only requires two. And she probably, there's a significant number above the 150 before you got in, was it 400 or something? Before you would be required to have a third entryway at 500. It's a lot of houses before you get up past that, you know? And whatever this draw it is that he submits, if he says he's taking it out, that's what he's going to, that's what he's got to grade to, you know? That's what he's got to build and design to.
That's what they want to know. What holds him to that piece of paper?
His permit, when it's approved or if it's approved.
Thank you.
To construct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against? Saying no one, we'll close the public hearing at 7:40. Right, want to make comment?
We've heard an awful lot of information. Some people think it's good. Some people think it's bad. What we have to do up here is take that information and make sure that we have the best neighborhood in Reesville. You know, some of these decisions is not up to us. It's up to the DOT. Or it's up to the developer. But we're going to work with them. Our job is to make sure that we make the best decision possible to make sure that it's what our citizens want. It's not going to please everybody, but we're going to do the best we can. We've heard you, and we're going to do the best we can to make this one of the best neighborhoods in Reesville.
Any other discussion? All right, what's the pleasure of council?
I'm going to make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specified parcels to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency, reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included into the minutes.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next item on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
We'll do a bit of public comment. We have to take about a five-minute break. All right, the next item on the agenda. Consideration of a conditional rezoning request for 650 Lindsay Rockingham County Parcel Number 154376 to conditional zoning office and institutional, CZO-NI, from residential six, R6. The application and owner of the property is the Flack Foundation, Ron Flack, enclosure three, Eagle Cloud Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm standing here for Drew. She had a family emergency. We just asked that you earn a family medical intent to... As you stated, Ron Flack is petitioning to rezonate 650 Lindsay Street, Rockingham County Parcel Number 154376 to conditional zoning office and institutional, from residential R6. The owner of the property is the Flack Foundation, as stated by the mayor. This parcel encompasses an area of 0.235 acres. Property is currently developed, single-family dwelling located on site. City ward and sewer services exist or are available within the right-of-way of Lindsay Street abutting to the south and Lambeau Street abutting to the west. The owner and applicant have requested to limit the allowable land uses to non-academic vocational schools and offices only. The applicant is not requested to deviate from the allowable dimensional standards for the normal O-N-I district. The proposed conditional rezoning alliance would go to the Reesville Land Development Plan to develop a strong local economy. This includes promoting development or redevelopment of currently underutilized areas and increasing professional opportunities. This property is located on the boundary of Growth Management Area Two, Urban, and Growth Management Area Three, Suburban. Given all of that information, staff proposed a conditional rezoning request to be consistent with the 2022 Reesville Land Development Plan Reasonable and in the public interest based on the aforementioned information provided in this report and the attached statements of reasonableness and consistency. The planning staff recommended the proposed conditional rezoning application be approved. And Mr. Flack is here to answer any questions you all may have about his property, his proposed rezoning.
I'd like to say something. I've been knowing Mr. Flack and son for numerous years, and you providing a very vital community service resource that's going to benefit many citizens, and that's what you all engaged in. And I'm knowledgeable of what you're doing. So, again, it's a very, very vital asset to our community.
Doctor Bishop Flack. If you don't want to have any questions, the doctor, go ahead.
Well, good evening to everyone. My name is Ron Flack Jr. I am a native of Reesville, North Carolina, and a co-founder of the Flack Foundation. If I may, I would love to share some, just some information with you all.
That's all you do. So, we do everything legal. We'll open the public hearing at 7:56, and you are four.
Apologies. Do I need to restate?
No, it was my fault. You're okay.
May I please approach?
Long as you're not going to hurt anybody.
Not at all. Again, we are grateful for the opportunity to stand here on behalf of the Flack Foundation, not to portray or object at time. I know we've been here for quite some time today. Standing before the zoning and planning committee, we go through the entire package. But what I have here is, I want to ensure that we go to page two, and that is our impact statement. Basically, back in 2020, the Flack Foundation, in the name of my late grandmother, Vivian Anes Flack, who served Rockingham County as a bedside CNA for a number of years until she retired. I think mostly 95% of Reesville knows my father. And as he have continued to serve on the medical side of things for a number of years through Cone Health, we continued that process after he retired. It appears today he still works even the more now than he did before he retired. But the Flack Foundation truly has been a major hub in the city for a number of families that we've been able to serve, as well as youth and young adults that we've been able to serve as well. to serve as well. Since 2020, over the last five years, over 600 students annually trained in CPR across Guilford County and Rockingham County, more than 2,400 students total educated through the entry-level life-saving medical training. We have been able to provide free monthly CPR classes offered to the broader public. We have also submitted to the city of Reesville over 2,000 hours of community service that has been rendered for the last five years. We have also donated over $10,000 in labor to support the restoration of one of our historic pillars within our community and that is a church here in the city of Reesville. There's a letter of support as well in this package. We have continued ensuring that we continue our materialism through the iconic Universal Food Bank, which is also housed at the Cornerstone Christian Center Church here in Reesville. We have annually, every year adopted between 20 to 25 families, between the summer and holiday seasons, delivering food, support, educational supplies, workforce coaching as well as household necessities, and we continue to provide additional ongoing entry-level opportunities for new individuals. And so when we're talking about giving people a fresh start, a new opportunity, several individuals have been able to receive their new start in a new career medically, at an entry-level medical position here in the city to begin working at local doctors' offices or group homes. And so again, we are standing in support of this opportunity to transition the zoning at the Vivian House for us to continue to maintain that hub as a beacon light for, for the city. It is a historic place in, in the city. We wanna maintain that as well. My father and I and the, the foundation, we were able to take this property that was dilapidated, if you will. Trees were growing through this house and we know the enrichment of, of this home as well as the historic district that the house sits in and we still maintained its original essence while still bringing, I believe, a, a little bit more color to the narrative of the home and I truly believe that this house will remain as what it is and that is serving the citizens of Reesville. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Flack?
What a great location and you have done a wonderful job in renovating that historical spot there in Lindsay and Lindsay and Prince. It's, it's just great for the community.
Sir, thank you.
I'll just thank you for your service to the community. I've never heard of your foundation.
Yes, sir.
So I'm very impressed and I think that more people in the city need to know things such as this that are going on around us and thank you for giving back to the community out here if that's what we need.
Absolutely. My grandmother was one that worked behind the scenes and so the Flack Foundation has had its hand in several, several private moments and we, we truly don't look for public acknowledgement, but truly just wanna ensure that we continue to be a beacon light and so at moments like this, we'll, we'll show up, but we truly believe that families and individuals, oftentimes people have, are so quick to take cameras in trying to gain personal clout versus just really doing the work and that's what we.
Well, as I say, you've done a lot of looking through, you've done a lot of it, but under the radar.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. I wanna thank you as well because I've known you and your family for quite a while and the work that you've done throughout the community has been exceptional and I just wanted to hope that you continue to do what you're doing.
Thank you.
Known seeing you for many years. Had the pleasure to meet Junior also, so.
Yes, sir.
How's it doing? A great job. Appreciate you.
Mayor, I, I can remember when you took me off of the bus a few times, so thank you.
It was a, it was a gentle route.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you all so much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against?
Is D.R. Horton doing this work?
Signal one will close the public hearing at 8:03. What is the pleasure of council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional rezoning application in our hearing this evening.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. The Flack Foundation, go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consideration of establishment of a social district in downtown Reesville and corresponding ordinance. Enclosure for Montana Brown Marketing and Economic Director.
Good evening to Mayor Gore, Madam Manager, ladies and gentlemen of City Council. It's great to see you all this evening. Have the pleasure of speaking with you a few different times. So for this first item, we're gonna be talking about the potential of launching a social district in downtown Reesville. So this presentation is pretty similar to the one that we showed in our public information sessions. You guys may have seen some of them before, but we added a couple other items we just really wanted to hit at home and, you know, let the public kinda know why we are considering this. So what is a social district? A social district is a designated outdoor area where individuals can carry and consume alcoholic beverages purchased from licensed businesses. It is authorized and regulated by General Statute 168 205.4 and 18B 300.1. It dictates that alcohol must be in marked containers for participating businesses with the date, time of purchase, and the purchase location. Each municipality defines certain rules such as the district boundaries and permitted times as approved by you and City Council. So what does North Carolina say, or North Carolina law say about social districts? So only permitted businesses with appropriate ABC permits can sell alcohol within a social district. Alcohol must be served in a non-glass marked container that displays the business name, the social district logo, which you have choices later on in the presentation. It has to have the phrase this exact way, "Drink responsibly, B21." It has to be a maximum of 16 fluid ounces. Alcohol must be consumed within boundaries and during set hours. Customers must dispose of their drinks before they leave the social district. Convenience stores and gas stations cannot sell drinks or alcohol within the social district and violations are subject to existing law and enforcement. So why is Reesville considering this? Social districts have been reported to accelerate the legalization of downtown as that has been an effort of Reesville for several years and something that we continue to focus on today. There's been interest from several downtown businesses and residents, which I'll touch on in a little bit. It's an excellent recruitment strategy and retention tool for businesses to come within our downtown. Provides additional collaboration opportunities for events and businesses and it also can have the ability to encourage extended store hours while supporting more evening foot traffic and business opportunities, something Reesville's been trying to do for quite a few years. It also offers new opportunities for increased revenue among current businesses, meaning that we've seen in other communities that, for example, boutiques, once a social district has been enacted, will then get an ABC permit and begin selling alcohol within their business. So I mentioned that we had some interest within this. My department had people reach out. We also canvassed downtown, sent emails, made phone calls of people we were able to reach out to. We ended up having 19 responses primarily from downtown businesses and some property owners. Of those 19, 11 said yes, they would like to support a social district. Four said no, they would not support a social district. And four said maybe, they would possibly participate in the social district. So where else are they in North Carolina? There are over 70 active social districts across the state as of 2025. In the last three months, I believe there's been three or four social districts that have actually been implemented. This includes cities of all towns and counties, from as large as Charlotte to folks like our neighbors in Rockingham County, Madison, and Eden. Reported benefits from other communities, and this is from us directly reaching out to communities, feedback provided in the Main Street forums as we are an accredited community. So, social districts can provide increased foot traffic in downtown activity, provide a boost to local restaurants and businesses, can provide increased support for events and collaboration among, excuse me, among businesses, and they are flexible and low cost to implement. Example of some of the collaboration that can happen amongst businesses are seven shop events, so evening shopping opportunities with retail businesses, providing beverages for sale and for tastings, stroller and saver, which are food and drink tours with limited special menus for a specific period of time, art walks, so gallery events with wine and beer tastings, provides an opportunity for business, department, local art shops and other art organizations that have been interested in the past in doing art walks, potentially throughout Reesville. Something I've seen in several other communities as well has been when a social district is established, businesses or merchants also then work together to implement what they call a social sign language. Something that takes place typically at least once a month during the spring and summer. They collaborate on specials, they collaborate on marketing to attract people and foot traffic to downtown. Again, many communities pair these kinds of events with discounts and special sales among shops and businesses, reporting a spike in sales and foot traffic during this house. If they'll implement it, how would you mitigate the risk? I think that's a very important question. I think it's also important to document that cities surveyed across North Carolina have reported minimal issues since implementation. I provided you a document within your agenda packet that was part of the Main Street forum that had, I believe it's close to 40 or 50 responses from folks over in North Carolina, all which have reported they have not had issues with a social district being implemented in their community. Participation by businesses is voluntary, if not required, a business must opt-in to participate. There will be clear signage, limited hours, and assistance from local law enforcement. Trash receptacles will be provided at every entrance and exit point in and out of the social district. Something also worth noting is that permits supersede the social district. So for example, if someone wants to do a vodka within the social district or a parade or anything like that, if they decide that they do not want alcohol at that event, they can determine that on their special or street closure permit and that would supersede, meaning the social district would be out of the picture for that period of that event. And how we would work on that, we would put no alcohol signs essentially for their event to enforce that. Additionally, you know, people are brought up, you know, potential litter downtown. So as of right now, the city has already posted a part-time downtown detention position to help assist with already litter that exists. As well as upkeep such as the flowers and whatnot that you see in downtown. We'd also expect this position to be able to help during, if a social district is implemented. All current alcohol or litter laws will still apply. So for example, public intoxication, underage drinking, driving under the influence, they all still apply. All businesses selling alcoholic beverages must be permitted through appropriate state licensures and associated trainings. So what does a social district typically include? Again, some of this is a little repetitive, but I really wanna drive it home to you. A social district includes clearly marked district boundaries and signage. Trash cans will be made available at every entrance and exit point. Has to have a branded or marked container, 16 fluid ounces maximum, "Drink responsibly, B21." They're designated hours for the district to be open. It's not 24/7/365. And businesses that choose to participate will have a window decal on their uniform that they place either on their window or their door that indicates to people downtown that they are open for social district participants. This is the proposed social district map that you all saw at your council retreat back in February. It goes as far north as West Morehead, as far south as William Street, as far west as South Main Street, and as far east as Southwest Market Street. It is worth noting that this map would encompass both sides of each road. So for example, South Main Street could potentially include the former Shea Lindsay Building, the Bed and Breakfast Building. That's something that you guys can decide to include or not include along with your vote. Also marked on this map, we see the dots, again, that is every entrance and exit point where a trash can will be. There are already trash cans on almost every entrance and exit point. I believe there are three or four that we would have to purchase and install if a social district was to pass. These are four options for a potential social district logo. If you decide to vote on a social district this evening, I would ask that you all decide which logo to move forward with. One kinda celebrates Reesville's rich football heritage. On the right, of course, you have, as perceived to be a beer, our logo, and a nod to our tobacco history. Bottom left, number three is the same but in white, and bottom right is tobacco, he's again honoring Reesville's rich tobacco history. You know, just because it's not around as properly as it used to be doesn't mean it's not something we can honor. It has made this community what it is and that's something we should accept and work Additionally, if you all vote for the social district this evening, you have the ability to decide what times you would like it to be active. I think two of the most logical that you could decide from would be Monday through Sunday, again, that's seven days a week, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Another option would be Thursday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The reason I say 11:00 a.m. is that way you can kind of include a brunch crowd, get people down here a little bit earlier in the day and that's something that people can build a menu off of. The reason we say 9:00 p.m. has, because tends to be when a lot of businesses close down and we don't want the social district to be active if there aren't any places for people to participate in, open. So that's why we recommend 9:00 p.m. Again, this is something you guys can vote on to decide. We can also vote to change it at a later date to, to expand more hours. So the process of creating and opening a social district, number one, gather public in downtown businesses. Number two, create social district boundary map, design signage, design decal or logo and set hours. Number three, rule by City Council. Number four, you all vote to approve a social district. You will then have to register the social district with the North Carolina Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. Meaning if you vote on it tonight, it does not automatically go in place. You would have to, again, register, get approved signage, install that signage, and get businesses registered as well. It'll take approximately about a month to get that registration with the NCA. Five, install signage, districting decal, the materials, I shouldn't say number six, that's my bad. Six, periodic review and possible development of the necessary. That's all I have for you guys. Again, if you decide to move forward with a social district, in your motion, I ask you to determine if that is the boundary map that you would like as well as which logo that you would like. If you have any questions, I'm completely here for you.
We saved two businesses, Locust City, very long.
It's truly hard to number two and I mean, we've been talking with cities for months just for phone calls and inverse congress or phone conversations, at least 10, 15 of those, but then also provided, talked about by North Carolina Main Street in the packet, which is, I think it's close to 40 others that are also listed, how they have, how things are called and say, look, you know, social district.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have that list, except minus the negatives, it's 40 or 50, 50 businesses that are alcoholic.
Quite a few. Yes, ma'am.
And I saw that it increased businesses to a pulp.
Yes, ma'am. It is an excellent recruitment tool. Everybody wants restaurants and a lot of restaurants get a lot of revenue from their alcohol sources. You know what happens in places? It's a tool to help recruit them and say, hey, we've already got this stuff in for you to be able to come in and start your business.
Eden has one, Madison, Lakeview, that area has one, which are very successful, no complaints, correct?
Yes, sir. We've talked with Eden several times, Ken White, who was our management manager, who was pretty diligently tempted there. I also took lunch over there one day to kinda see pretty much how it's implemented and how they do the signage. Talked to a couple people, a couple businesses, to see how they know about it as well. Very much a positive.
I had an opportunity to walk the streets in Greensboro two or three times and haven't seen anything unusual driven through in the past.
Didn't you speak to sort of the police officer?
Over there too, was that you that done that?
Yeah.
And said that they had no.
They hadn't had any issues.
And it was pretty good for downtown.
Go ahead.
Yes, signage, decals, materials, cups, will that be at the expense of the city or at the expense of the people that will be distributing the?
Yes, ma'am, that's a great question. So, for businesses that will be serving alcohol within a social district, they have to get a permit through the city. That fee is what we, as proposing the ordinance within this that I'll ask you to vote on. It'll be twenty-five dollars, and that will include the signage that they can put up. For those that want to participate in the social district and not serve alcohol, we are asking that they still register with the city so we have them essentially in our system, and that we can also promote them on our website. That would be a five dollar fee, and that would include their signage. As far as the stickers for the cups, what we would do is for individuals that participate in that social district, we send them a file, you know, whether that be PNG, JPEG, PDF, what have you, and essentially it gives the dimensions, and they are in charge of ordering their own stickers.
So, is there an annual fee that they will pay to maintain in this? Is this a one-time fee?
One-time fee. Help with calls for the signage and to review that application.
So, my, I'm just curious, does that cover the additional fees if you have enough? Does that cover those costs?
Signage shouldn't be too expensive, truthfully.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I didn't see a decal that combined both football and tobacco, you know, maybe that was difficult to do, whatnot, but I think both have, you know, have really a big impact on our city.
Yes, sir.
Regards to the boundaries, um, I don't know if we have to change it tonight or what, but I don't, I'm not feeling it all the way down to Williams Street. I don't know, I'm trying to figure the purpose all the way down because Shea Lindsay, that's a mute point now.
Oh, yeah.
So, my take is, I'm not sure if we need to extend it down to Williams Street, to be honest with you. So, I don't know if that's something we need to change here tonight, I just, I just can't see it down to Williams Street.
Because all the reasons we incorporated that.
I think it's tough to get, so.
Yeah, the only reason we incorporated that was to not signal them out. The last time that business was down, the government was gonna.
Yeah, like I said, that's a mute point with them, moving and all that stuff, so I mean, if we need to change that, what do we?
Mayor Council, what you do is you just amend this map. That's all you have to do, if you want those bounds, because I think when we presented this at the root tree, we had several options, and there were options to include that streets, it would just be an amendment to this map, which we certainly did.
Literally.
Literally.
Like that option, we could work back to that original map.
It'd just be a map amendment.
We did it tonight.
If you, if you feel desired to.
One of the things that we, that you mentioned was the convenience stores and gas stations and upstairs for the social district. But if we had an event going on and the social district wasn't in place, can they sell beer? They just can't sell it to be consumed in the social district.
Correct. They couldn't sell it to be consumed in the social district. Point of that essentially was to ensure folks that, you know, people aren't going down to the gas station and buying a twelve pack or a forty ounce.
Put it in the bag.
Right, yes, ma'am.
I mean, isn't that a thing after the state?
That's a, that's an easy fix on our end.
Thank you, we just want to mention that there's a motion to approve it along those lines. Right, okay.
And really what we were, what we're looking for your guidance tonight is we, a map amendment, because it seems like desire of council map amendment. We need you to decide the times. Montana presented two timeframes, and then a perceived logo, if that, if we could get some consideration there, and I think Montana, you know, made it perfectly, a good point. This is not running back tomorrow, this will take at least a minimum of thirty days, and before even went to, into effect, we would bring this back to council and say thirty days prior, like this will be effective, now I'm making this data up, October first. We would give you the public ample notice, it's not just gonna happen overnight, NCA Social District.
And that was another question that I had, was could we set a starting point?
Certainly can.
And the reason, and the reason I'm going there is what we're already working on with the buildings downtown, with your, what you just spoke about, bringing businesses here and drawing businesses, getting restaurants downtown. Everybody knows that's the challenges with the buildings that we have downtown that are empty, that could hold something like that. That's where we're at now, trying to work with the owners of that property. So, if we, if we could have a buffer before this thing's launched to give us an opportunity, that's, that's my feelings of it.
And that would be something we'd recommend to staff, is to have that if council wants to consider an effective date, and again, I made October first up, but that gives you time to talk to your constituents, it gives us time to go to the state and have this thing rolled out to where everyone is aware of what's gonna happen.
Get it out before the fall festival?
The fall festival, yes, October.
October eighteenth, yeah.
So, you would start at October first.
Just as a joke, I just moved that date.
We could realistically start it prior to that, but, right, it would take a minimum of thirty days.
That gives you ample time to get, get notice out there and get some marketing.
Do we need to vote on that date?
October first is fine, because you don't have to have business right now anyway, so not to let that business that quick.
So, I think the, the first motion in Montana, correct me wrong, I think the first motion would be to, in favor or opposition of a social district, that'd be your first motion, establish that, then we can go line by line.
Um, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Go ahead and make the motion then.
Now, this is a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Any other questions, Montana?
No.
So, anyone else who'd like, well, public hearing starts at eight twenty-four.
This is four, or it don't matter, four, hint.
This is four, four. Name and address.
Yes. Good evening, my name is Valerie Eamon, I live at twelve sixteen South Park Drive, and I'm a fairly recent, four years ago, moved here to Reedsville by choice, so Reedsville is a attractive community, and we want to keep it that way. And I think one thing that we've talked about, you've talked about tonight, is that you're wanting to, the area to grow, and you're wanting to get residents, and there was discussion, how do you get people to move here, you know, jobs, money, housing, all that, and part of it's amenities. People want something to do, and when you go through downtown Reedsville and there's nothing open, and, you know, and there's nothing going on, I think we've got some points that are starting to spark, you've got the rocking and theater, Lucky City, Celtic Fringe, and all the things, but anything we can do to help these businesses and others build up and connect with each other and have some good events. The concerts, the summer concerts, I think that shows you what we can have, because there's hundreds of people out, and they're having a great time, and there's wine, and there's beer, nobody's being bad, everybody's having a good time, the kids are playing, the music's playing, and it's those wonderful events, and I think it shows that Reedsville could have a lot livelier downtown. I think we just need to give it some help to, you know, help these businesses do some things with some events to get them going, and, and the good stuff is gonna, you know, build one on the other, but it is a challenge, like with the older buildings and things, but there's so many good things here, and, you know, you've got plenty of parking, you've got some cool buildings that could really, you know, this could be a wonderful, wonderful, lively community, and as more people move here, they're going to want more different things to do, so I hope you will vote for the social district.
So, anyone else who'd like to speak for?
Hello, I'm Anne Lane, I live at five thirty-six Park Lane. I come from a thriving small town back home. I've lived in Reedsville now for ten years, and I've watched this town die, and now that I'm retired, I need something to do. There's nothing to do here, realistically. A social district will help Reedsville grow again, become, reach the potential to be the wonderful small town that it is. We're building lots and lots of homes in Reedsville, but the people that are gonna be buying those homes need places to go, they need things to do, they need a thriving downtown, and a social district will help bring that back. I used to work in Madison, Madison was dead when I worked there. We went over there after the social district had opened, and I was absolutely stunned at the progress that Madison had made, just because of that social district, just because of that. This can be nothing but good for Reedsville. Reedsville needs it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else who'd like to speak for?
Mark Lipscomb, twenty-one, twenty-eight Olive Drive, Reedsville. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I make some notes? I'm a board member at Lucky City Brewing, so I stand here on behalf of the brewery. We definitely support, of course, the social district, and as all Montana shared, it brings foot traffic, just visualization to the community. When we host things at Lucky City, you know, we always have a food truck. We have to remind people, they can't take their, they can't take their alcohol right outside the parking lot for the food truck. So, they either have to drink it, then go out and order, or they have to leave their glass, they, if you like me, I don't like leaving my glass, and they have to do that and come back, so this would eliminate a lot of that. Of course, social district collaborates between businesses, it offers partnership with Lucky City, with other businesses, and it's not just about alcohol, it's about creating a vibrant, walkable downtown where people can gather, celebrate, and connect. At Lucky City, we do understand the importance of safety and responsibility. Lucky City has been committed to following all ABC regulations and ensuring that the staff is properly trained to serve responsibly. So, in that, within closing, I'd like to say that as a local business leader and community member, I urge you to support this initiative, not just for Lucky City Brewing, but for the future of downtown Reedsville. Thank you.
Speaking for?
Name and address.
Danny C. Booker, I live at two oh six West Stonebury Court, and I've been here since nineteen fifty-one, when this was a post office, Dad's office was across the street from Elbider. So, I spent a lot of time walking around in Reedsville, and up to this day, you may see me biking through town in Reedsville. I probably bike around in Reedsville, in town, the neighborhoods, and they go out in the county where it's probably more dangerous. And usually when I bike, I bike, you know, usually twenty, twenty-five miles, and I enjoy the hill over here, the Monument Hill, we used to call it, but it's not anymore. But you know, back in the sixties, you know, Reedsville's population was around twelve thousand people, and then it took a dip, and now it's back up to about thirteen, or a little over thirteen. And, you know, we watched businesses kind of dissipate from downtown Reedsville and move out, and everybody said, well, you know, they're going to the mall, the malls, you know, about ready, may as well level it, because it's just not going anywhere. And then, you know, we're at a point now that you need incentives for people to come into town, you know, you have the fringe, you've got the loco boka, and then you've also got, you know, I know two other people that own two different buildings, one's like a dirty laundry would like to open up, and then there's another one that could be a wine tasting bar that the guy's been pondering with it for years, near Twenty Four Blackbirds, and that'd be good. But you know, I found myself, back a few weeks ago, I go to Lucky City and meet the new people coming into town and talk to them, and I always say, you know, Reedsville's great, you know, it's just a good place to live, and I say, you know, in fact, I can be anywhere in Greensboro in twenty-five, thirty minutes, I can, you know, just go over there. But then, you know, I thought, why am I having to go over there to go out to eat when we can have these restaurants here? And, and this would be a great incentive for, you know, people want to open something or expand upon, and I just think it'd be great. I agree with what Val said and Ann said, you know, it's, there's, this is a time that need to take opportunity with, you know, your development, you're growing, and put in more of these houses all around town, you're, the city's rezoning and for the purpose to take care of these people. And even though, you know, they keep talking about the fourteen thousand coming in with the airplane plant, well, it's gonna be ten years, you know, over ten years, and so, you know, if they start planning now and start trying to do things now to expand to downtown, it'd be good. And only other two things I would think of is, you know, if you didn't go with a full week, I really could see a Wednesday, maybe through Sunday on it. And then also, I agree with the, the map there. I think, you know, going down to Williams Street's kind of stretching it, maybe, you know, south, you know, from Lindsay Street south, maybe cut it off, and I think it's just unnecessary, it's just no traffic in that area right now, and then like you said, this is not sitting stone, it can always be changed and adjusted, you know, dependent. If things were not working out, smaller, it worked out great, expand it. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, anyone else who'd like to speak for? So, anyone who'd like to speak against?
Thank y'all so much for your time. My name is Irish Dickerson, I'm from twenty twenty-nine Narrow Gage Road, Reedsville. We run a shop on South Scale Street. At the last meeting that we came to, talking about the social district was gonna bring recruit, I think was the word, businesses downtown. I would love to see more businesses downtown, I would love to see foot traffic downtown every single day, but I've not seen any statistics on the proof that Eden or Madison, I haven't seen any, like, the Flack Foundation gave great statistics, I haven't seen any of that. And what I have heard from people from Madison and Eden, and I know it's all hidden, as I was told at the last meeting, that they haven't seen it. So, I mean, maybe the leaders do say it is, but a lot of the people that live there do not agree. And as recruiting, we know Lucky City has been in trouble since they opened, y'all are aware of that, we are all aware of that, and I know this business would, this would probably help them, but they are not a restaurant, they do not serve food. We keep talking about recruiting restaurants downtown, why don't they have food? Why don't they serve food? I mean, you know, we're talking about doing a social district where people can walk around with cups, but we are talking about a business that's opened downtown that has suffered since they opened, they do not serve food, where is the restaurant? We're gonna, heard that there's no one gonna be open at the laundromat, and that, are they gonna serve food too? So, what are we, what are we opening up to? We keep talking about restaurants, we keep talking about all this, but these people already have an ABC license, they can serve, and if they want, someone wants something to drink, they can go there and drink it. And, you know, and it, and the big thing, the big thing that bothers me is that you're gonna have this for, as he said, from eleven to nine. The biggest problem that I have with my business right now is there's no where to park. People will go round and around and around just to find a place to park, and you think, and I know, last time I brought this up, it was told that, you know, people can walk up and down the street, people love to walk up and down, stroll up and down the street. A lot of people in my store are older, they don't care about walking up and down the street, they want to get to the business, come in their shop for their fifteen, twenty minutes and leave. You're talking about people coming into Reedsville and parking and walking up and down the street, going from one place of business to another place of business and getting drinks and leaving their car parked there. Well, I have, my customers don't have places to park. I have asked how it was addressed, we're working on it. I don't see any solutions to the parking downtown. There is a problem, a major problem with parking. Okay, I'm just gonna make sure I got everything down here, and there was a great reel that was put out today, fantastic reel, of a family that the team, Team Reedsville put out, of a family taking their kids and walking downtown through Reedsville with their kids. Now, which way are we gonna present downtown? Is it the family going downtown and shopping? And we need more stores, and I know you're talking about events. about events and doing all this in advance and having all this. I'm not working events. I'm doing my business five days a week. I can't live off of events. I have to have business in my store at least five days a week. And if this business, this is passed, then you're gonna take what little bit of parking that I've got from my customers. And like I said, a lot of my customers are older. They don't want to walk on the other side of downtown to just get into my store. This is not going to help my business. This is going to hurt it. And you know, we talking about all these P P's businesses that he spoke of downtown. What businesses do we have downtown? We have a realtor. We have hairdressers downtown. We have an insurance agencies downtown. We need more retail business downtown. And this, I don't see this bringing it to our downtown. And as far as helping others, that's not what I'm hearing. Like I said, it is their opinion and my opinion and the opinion that I've heard. But that's not what I've heard. I've heard, yes, there's trash. They leave trash. And yes, you'll have to have somebody to do that. So it's gonna cost us. So, you know, I, I love the reel that was put out with the family walking downtown and walking through the mural and talking about how much fun they would have downtown. Are we talking about family fun or what kind of fun are we, where we are putting out there? I need my business to work, not just at events. I need it to work at least five days a week when I have it open. And yes, oh yes, I could open it up and keep it open up in extra hours, but where would they park? Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your time. And I hope you consider what I have spoken today.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 8:40. Is there any discussion, counsel?
What's the first motion we're making to adopt it?
I had a comment before we get to that point. I just want to, with, with this vote and going into this vote, I just want us to ensure if we, if this does pass, that we take this district serious in the enforcement and monitoring of this location. I don't want us to forget about it just because we vote on it here tonight. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna fall on the police department to monitor these violations and handle these violations as seen. Currently, we don't have a downtown officer, which we've had one for several years, which I would assume that would probably fall on that individual at certain times and then just regular shift. But I just wanted, because this is a, this is a hot topic. You got businesses affected somewhat, some don't. I'm, I'm not a big fan of it, but I'm not against it. But my, my whole issue is, is I want us to ensure that if we pass something like this, that, that it is monitored and kept up with and then zero tolerance for any kind of violations or anybody cutting corners, any businesses cutting corners or anything like that. If we're gonna do it, do it right, keep it monitored. And maybe, maybe it'll work. I don't know. But it's been pushed to us to look at, to make the final decision. It'll be on the, it's the city's baby. They're gonna have to take care of it and monitor it and handle it. So that's all I kind of say on that. That's my comment, my opinion.
I'll just make a comment, you know, to kind of make some comments to the last lady who spoke out against this. So we have these documents in front of us. There's 11 businesses downtown who support it. Four who say they do not, I wouldn't, I would assume would be her. And four who say they may, who say they may support and participate, but they're unsure of. So there's approximately 15 people, four versus four against. I have been to Madison, my family, I have kids. I'm not a stagger and drunk. I can go have a beer and I can go eat somewhere and still raise my kids. I'm not drinking a 12-pack. I go, my family goes to Madison and Mayadan to eat simply because there are things there versus here in downtown Reesville. And I have witnessed it myself, instead of asking someone else to go visit these places. I've been downtown Eden. I've been downtown Greensboro. I've been to Florida, downtown Florida and all the places. And I haven't seen these issues. What I have seen personally myself is the revitalization, the draw to come down, to, to come there. So the, the, the thought that this is just gonna destroy downtown and hinder all businesses from operating, in my opinion, is absurd. We've been researching, there's been many questions asked by staff, six, eight months, maybe a year, that this has been going on, where we've had many, many meetings, going back, getting more information and more information and more information to ensure that we do this properly. We've had many conversations, the police chief's input, the police department's input. I've spoken to the police chief, law enforcement officials, Eden, Madison, Mayadan, in different localities, as well as council members in these different locations. I think if these guys were getting all this pushback and this rhetoric from the citizens, they wouldn't support it in these towns. And I also think the best, the best advice you can be is go out and experience it yourself, instead of letting someone else formulate your opinion about something. Because if you don't go, you don't know. So that, that's what I have to say. I think staffs work very hard to ensure that we don't have these problems. And I think anybody knows me, that I'm very blunt and direct and to the point. And I would not let the city be in despair, nor would I support that. Yes, there's work involved to maintain and monitor, but, you know, we can either get out and work and do things to make Reesville grow, or we can sit back and we can be lazy and just let it flow like it is. And everybody can continue to plunk, complain about what downtown Reesville looks like and how there's nowhere to go and there's nothing to do.
I have to show my face.
Okay.
How many parking spaces do we have downtown? Can you remind me of that?
As you don't know, I'm talking about, I apologize, Montana.
A lot, but people don't utilize it because they don't want to park on the backside of Lucky City. They don't want to park on the backside of these other locations. And everybody wants to pull right up to the front door. It's the same as people going to the grocery store. They're too lazy to put their cart in the grocery cart, so they leave it sitting right there because they don't want to walk five more steps.
I know we have hundreds of spaces downtown, but the other decisions that we've made tonight are the ones that's going, not only tonight, but in other council meetings, are the decisions that's gonna increase our businesses is rooftops. The more rooftops we get, the more businesses we're gonna get. Businesses follow rooftops. As we grow as a city and we get more houses and apartments and townhomes, that's when the businesses will come. That's right now. It's why we're losing businesses. They may think, I'd like to come to Reesville, but then when they start counting how many houses we have and what our population is, it doesn't add up. Rooftops bring businesses. That's how we're gonna get businesses downtown.
Population.
Correct.
Mayor and counsel, if I may, the first thing, if so desired, staff would ask that you make a motion to approve the social district ordinance as proposed, including the boundary map. So there is an amendment to the boundary map. I want to make sure that I'm clear from council. You want to stop it there at Settle Street?
That would be my motion, amendment.
But, stop it at Settle Street. What about Market Square?
That would include.
It's only on that side. If you were. Original map was tilted where it included that, but it didn't include to the bank on that one. It went up one, one street over.
Yeah.
The second part to that would be the logo. Montana, can you go back to your logo and let council look at a logo?
Yes, ma'am. I believe you also have it in your agenda packet, too.
I want the burgundy.
There's a consensus from council on a preferred logo.
Have a comment, please.
Yes, ma'am.
The top one, right-hand burgundy, downtown Reesville. I like that because that's where our social district is, downtown Reesville. I like the tobacco leaf, but could we change the other tobacco leaf to a football?
Be possible.
Or you could take the beer glass out, put the field goal post and leave the two tobacco signs on it with the address. I think that's what he was looking for. Reesville's logo's on a beer glass. So I think Councilman Harrison was wanting to see more of like the football logo. And so if you took the beer glass out, put the football, put the field goal post over in there.
You're correct.
Would that be what you're looking for?
Exactly.
But I do like the downtown Reesville.
Well, you leave it right in there. You're just changing the one picture. You're taking the mug, beer mug out and putting the field goal post in.
Mayor and council, staff was just hesitant with it being football and associated with high school.
And tobacco.
With tobacco or alcohol. That was the only reason why we, we did put it that way.
Glad you brought that up because as a former teacher, I don't like too much the idea of having schools involved with that.
We definitely understood that. Part of the reason we did do that too, though, is, sorry, because that is partially how we market Reesville, right? Football, football capital of the world. The thought of doing something football, and this is, I'll explain why we did it, was I think it would help with the marketing plan. I think it could help with merchandise, things of that nature. But that is.
Not gonna cut against it, but.
But that's definitely something to consider on both.
Councilman Harrison, I mean, every, every sports association, and believe me, if they pass a state law, the majority of the people would want to buy a beer at a Reesville football game, just like they do at college sports now as well. So, oh, I like, I like the idea of what he requested. And I'll just throw that in. I think that meets what Councilman Harrison has. I don't know if anybody opposes or against that.
I'd like it better that way than to have just football, if that makes sense.
If you're losing the beer, all you're getting is a, is a football post and two tobacco leaves on each side.
I can do that. Right.
Show of hands, who is good for that.
You making a motion?
Well.
Just consensus.
We have time with.
Okay. And then the last part, thank you, Mayor and counsel, the last part would be the operation hours. And Montana, if you'll go back to that really quick.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we have a lot of holidays that fall on Mondays.
Thursday, Thursday, Sunday can always be.
You can always bend it.
Yeah. I think you start off the Thursday through Sunday, fill your way in, fill the operationals out. And then whatever it takes, if, as, as businesses pick up and the demand grows, you can tailor that, just like we talked, you know, to increase that. And that kind of will give everybody an opportunity to adjust and fill it, you know.
I agree with that one.
I'm okay with that, too.
Got a consensus on it?
Yes.
So, Mayor and counsel, if I may repeat this, this would be the desired motion in Montana. If I state something incorrect, let me know. If so desired, we ask that you make a motion to approve the social district ordinance as proposed, including the boundary map as amended to just to show Settle Street as originally proposed at your budget retreat. The logo would be the downtown Reesville with the field goal and the tobacco leaves. We can modify that. And then also, the maintenance and operation plans that staff could move forward would be hours of operation Thursday through Sunday, 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. The last thing I would ask, do you want this to be effective October 1st? That gives us quite a bit of time to get this rolled out to the state to make sure we're approved. It also gives us time to report back to you our progress of where we are.
There's one question. Did you, was it 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. or 11 a.m. to 9 p.m.?
I am so sorry, 11 a.m. to 9 p.m. Y'all, please stop. I apologize. I'm sincerely sorry.
That's a long.
Can I say one thing? And I just want to ask you this one particular question. You know, we have the, this, this will be in effect when we have the festival, which is like three weeks in, two or three weeks after that effective date. Would you, would you want to roll this out a little bit earlier in a more soft approach and kind of see what you get out of Lucky City and kind of let everybody learn their roles and not hit them really hard two weeks in at the end of, you know, as soon as you do them two weeks in.
And we have a concert in September, right?
Had an opportunity.
That's a great, that's a very good point. You can do September 1st. That at least gives you the next 30 days. So let's go to the sticks. So you can do September 1st. That's a great.
I'm just throwing out, like, figuring that out, you know.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Rolling that out and figuring how to address the public's concern. How do we police this? How, how are we making, because you may get a little bit of fill-over traffic from Lucky City over to the Celtic Fridge right now and coming, it'd give you an opportunity to just kind of slow walk it. Not, I think, come festive and you'll just be hit wide open with it two weeks in. And everybody's gonna be like, what do we do? You know, kind of thing.
That's good.
All right. Do we, do we have a motion to the generated motion by our city manager?
I make a motion to follow what she read off on there.
Second, what he says.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Montana.
I think I'm coming up again. I believe you got two more.
You are. But we got public comments before.
My apologies.
Rules governing public comments at regional city council regular monthly meetings. The purpose of public comment period shall be to allow members of the public to present any matter pertaining to city business or item on the city council agenda. The period should not serve as a forum for debate between the speaker and city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and may only speak once at each meeting. Each speaker shall only make comments while at the podium, after clearly stating his or her name, address and so forth. The topic must be something related to the business of Reesville or something that the city council can have some influence or control over. Remarks shall be addressed through the city council and not to staff, the audience or media. No remarks shall be made on any matter pertaining to quasi judicial hearings conducted by the city council. Speakers will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures or use language of personal nature, which insults or demeans any person or which when directed at the public official. It's not related to or his or her public duties. Actions to, actions by city council on topics raised under the public comment section should not be expected. So we won't be commenting on everything that's, that's put forth, reformed tonight. Written comments may be accepted in lieu of oral statements and may be delivered personally or mailed to the clerk's office at 230 West Morehead Street, Reesville, North Carolina, 27320. This is effective July 1, 2025. Is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment on tonight?
We do have one person.
We do. All right, come on up, please.
Take your name and address.
Good evening. Ray Davis, 602 Moore Street, Reesville. To the council, as an added arm near many locations, I stand before you to speak of the excessive elevated crisis for the residents and non-residents to relax, whether for RVing or tent camping at Lake Reesville campground. Last week, while strolling about to a celebration, I was notified of the new race in effect. And I wondered to myself, when did this take place, what references was used, and how, in my view of it, it would backfire and hurt participation. The remodeling of our campground, which is completed, was needed and passed. The remodeling of our campground, which is completed, was needed and passed due. But look at the whole picture. What else, like amenities, are being offered today? Ever since day one, I have been looking for you that we use both hollow campground and hot one as an example. There are four sections, A, B, and C, are full hookups. Section A has a pool. Section D is water, 30 amp hookups for $35. And back to A, B, and C, it's been $45 for years. They also have tent camp in a wood platform for $30. In most state parks, lower than the current prices that we have in Reesville. I've said before, you had the main meeting, and I proposed to you, an increase was needed with the improvements made, but it should only be $5 each way, non-resident and resident, on each side gradually increasing as needed. Sir and men, council members, Lake Reesville with the upgrade is no RV resort. From $23 and $27 to $50 and $75 for both full hookups and only water and electricity, monthly rates going from $300 to $600 and $1,200 a month is absurd. To many people, that's a house payment. But if reverse decision is not made, rethought, reevaluated, come back and re-discuss, it's going to hurt our hidden gem in participation. Trust me, it will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Tricia Durham, and I live at 671 Blanco Church Loop in Summerfield. Being a close neighbor of Reesville and also an avid RV camper, we have visited Lake Reesville. I don't, not as formal as my friend here. Being a former, we've been visiting Lake Reesville for six years. It's the best place that we've ever been camping, and it's affordable for my family of four to go. We're not made of money. We can't take luxurious trips everywhere, so we bought a camper. We stay close to home so that we can take care of our older family. And the increase that we have just found out about has been devastating. Knowing that as an outside resident, we pay the higher price, which was $28, has moved it to $75, which has made it absolutely unreasonable and unaffordable for me and my family. We bring probably six or seven family members who also have campers into that campground. We've also called it the hidden gem, which is really interesting that he said the same thing. It truly is a hidden gem of Reesville. It's quiet, it's friendly, it's clean. The upgrades are amazing, and we're well overdue, but by far is this a state-of-the-art campground. We have Hagen Stone. I know he mentioned Oak Hollow. Hagen Stone is $25 a night and has three times the amount of amenities, including a lake. You know, the Oak Hollow, same thing. I don't want to repeat what he's already said, but same thing. The amenities are immense, state-of-the-art facility with working Wi-Fi. Reesville is definitely questionable in the technology department. I understand that more improvements are coming, and we're looking forward to those improvements, but I still don't see where $75 a night is going to bring more people into the area. We are now forced to go look someplace else. And I know that we're not the only families that feel that way. The other thing is, is when we're here in Reesville and we're camping in Reesville, we shop in Reesville. You know, we visit the food lines and the privately owned businesses and the restaurants. We don't just stay at the campground for a week. We come out and venture out into the area that we love. So you're also losing our patronage, which is really unfortunate, being such close neighbors to you guys. So I just want you to kind of take that on into consideration. I don't know much about this. This is something that we just heard of, saw that we could come here and kind of talk about it for a moment. Don't know if it'll make an impact, but I really hope that you'll reconsider or rethink about what this is going to do to the community of campers that do enjoy coming into Lake Reesville. And we do appreciate the upgrades, and we do understand that there's more upgrades coming, but it's never going to warrant a high business of $75 a night where you can go to Yogi Bear and, and get thousands of amenities for lesser price. We love Reesville. We want to keep coming here, so I hope you guys will take that into consideration. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Public comment.
In closing, public comment section. We go on to the next item on our agenda. Consideration of updates to Market Square application.
Rules and regulations, enclosure five, Montana.
Good evening again. I may have jumped the gun a little bit earlier. My apologies. We'll just jump right into it. So during city council's budget review in February, city council indicated that they would potentially be interested in updating the city's existing alcohol ordinance. Included in this discussion was the ability for alcohol to be served by renters of Market Square. In addition to this, staff felt that it was necessary to make updates to the policy that more closely resemble the updated street closure process that was implemented over the last year. Staff felt that we need to administer the police department, the fire department, public works, human resources, planning, parks and recreation, and marketing and economic development to elaborately discuss these matters. Through these meetings, we moved to the Market Square application, along with the rules and regulations. Additional fees were added, such as a $10 fee per additional trash receptacle that needs to be added to the facility or in that, as right now there are four trash receptacles at Market Square that you would not pay for. Additionally, we changed the amount of time given to the city to return the $200 security deposit to extend up to 30 days. We also added language that would allow renters to sell alcohol, given that they require appropriate ABC permits. If alcohol is to be served at an event, it would also require the presence of security personnel in the form of the police department. After reviewing the proposed amendment, the police department developed a staffing plan and the renter charged based on the previously approved fee schedule. As part of the changes, we require that the debalance be paid 45 days prior to the event, and the proposed security fee assessed by the police department be paid at least 14 days prior to the event. If so desired, we ask that you make a motion to approve, to approve the proposed Market Square application rules and regulations as shown in your agenda packet.
Any questions, Montana? This is the favor of council. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Montana. That's right, you're up here again.
Two more times.
Consideration of an ordinance amending sections 11 through 22 consumption of alcoholic beverages in the city's code of ordinance, enclosure six, Montana.
Gorman, so I'm going to read this ordinance aloud to all in the crowd. Starts off, an ordinance amending chapter 11 offenses and miscellaneous provisions, article one in general, section 11 dash 22, consumption of alcoholic beverages. Whereas is the desire of Reesville City Council to amend section 1122, consumption of malt beverages and blood wine of Reesville City Code of Ordinances, to specify in which city-owned properties the consumption of alcoholic beverages is allowed with appropriate permitting. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Reesville City Council that section 1122 of the Reesville Code of Ordinances be retitled and A and B be rewritten to reflect changes in language and specify those city-owned properties. A1 and C, reverting motor vehicles, will be deleted due to changes in the North Carolina General Statute of Chapter 18B. Indeed, B relabeled to C remains the same. So A states, it shall be unlawful for any person to consume any alcoholic beverages as defined by General Statute 18B, in or on any public street, right of way or sidewalk within the city or on any property owned, occupied, or controlled by the city. B, subsections A shall not apply within a building or premises on city-owned property where appropriate permits have been obtained as required by law for the consumption of alcoholic beverages for the period of time permitted thereunder. These permitted premises include Market Square and 33 South Skill Street, the penthouse at 324 Maple Avenue, and the carriage house located in 24 Maple Avenue and in that. For all city parks and recreation areas, refers to City Code of Section 12 of that one. C, a violation of this ordinance shall be a class three misdemeanor punishable by a fine not to exceed $500 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14-4. If so desired, we ask that you make a motion to approve ordinance amending chapter 11, section 1122 as proposed in the agenda packet.
Any questions, Montana?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The violation of this ordinance, will that be the individual or whoever was responsible for the, like if they rented Market Square?
It will be for the person who's consumed.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. So it could be multiple people?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? But is the pleasure of council. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, consideration of an ordinance amending 12 through 1, consumption of alcoholic beverages in city parks and recreation areas of the city's code of ordinance, enclosure seven, Montana.
Well, this is anything I did for the last one. Start from the top. An ordinance amending chapter 12, Parks and Recreation, article one in general, section 12 dash one, consumption of alcoholic beverages in city parks and recreation areas. Whereas is the desire of Reesville City Council that the Reesville City Code of Ordinances, section 12 dash one, prohibition of all beverages under blood wine in city parks and recreation areas, allows consumption of alcoholic beverages at Lake Reesville after appropriate permits have been obtained for a designated area and allowed within the campground area. Therefore, be it ordained by the Reesville City Council that section 12 dash one of the Reesville Code of Ordinances be repealed, retitled, and rewritten as follows. Section 12 dash one, consumption of alcoholic beverages in city parks and recreation areas. A, it shall be unlawful for any person to consume any alcoholic beverages as defined by General Statute of Chapter 18B, in or on any public street, right of way, park, greenway, lake, or sidewalk within the city or on any property owned, occupied, or controlled by the city. B, subsection A shall not apply within a building or premises on city-owned property where appropriate permits have been obtained as required by law for the consumption of alcoholic beverages for the period of time permitted thereunder. These permitted premises include designated area for alcohol consumption at Lake Reesville, 630 Waterworks Road. C, consumption of alcoholic beverages are allowed within Lake Reesville campground by registered campers and their guests. D, the possession of alcoholic beverages on the premises of parks and recreational areas under the control of the city of Reesville is prohibited except by contract between a lessee in the city for upper JC Park Ball Field, located at 125 JC Road. E, a violation of this ordinance shall be a class three misdemeanor punishable by a fine not to exceed $500 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14-4.
All right, any questions, Montana? What is the pleasure of council?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance amended chapter 12, subsection 12 dash one as proposed.
Second.
They really had to step in right quick. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, consideration of safety concerns as Sherwood, Richardson Drive intersection, enclosure eight, for more city.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Questions that express safety concerns about the intersection on Sherwood Drive and Richardson Drive? There was a fatality at this intersection in 1997. There's also been several vehicle accidents at this intersection, according to police crash reports. City staff reached out to NC DOT back in April of 2025 in regards to this concern as Richardson Drive is an NC DOT maintained road. NC DOT conducted a traffic study on May the 5th. Based on NC DOT's traffic study, this intersection does not have enough traffic volume to have a traffic signal installed. NC DOT does agree that there is a sight distance concern at this intersection. NC DOT is recommending converting this intersection to a four-way stop. NC DOT would pay for all costs and construction associated with this conversion. City staff expressed concerns with turning this intersection to a four-way stop due to the increased traffic congestion this may cause. NC DOT officials recommended to try this approach first, and then if traffic congestion becomes a problem, NC DOT is willing to reconsider the installation of a traffic signal. NC DOT also suggests that this may help slow speed on Richardson Drive. NC DOT will not pay for a traffic signal as this intersection does not have enough traffic volume to warrant a traffic signal, according to their data. If the city wishes to pursue a traffic light at this intersection, the city would have to get approval from NCOT, NC DOT, and if NC DOT granted approval, this expense would be on the city of Reesville. The estimated cost, according to NCOT, to install a traffic signal at this intersection would be anywhere from $100,000 to $250,000. So we have three options for council to consider tonight. Keep intersection at Sherwood Drive and Richardson Drive as is option one. Option two, authorize NC DOT to convert the intersection at Sherwood Drive and Richardson Drive into a four-way stop. They would also do some trimming and trimming within the right of way of that shrubbery area. And then option three, we can continue to petition NCOT for a traffic signal, but I don't know how much further I could push it without your support or representation support.
What would the cost be if, if we weren't, you said they wouldn't pay for it, we'd have to pay for it, what would the cost be?
To do the traffic signal? So to do the traffic signal, if, if they, if we, even if they would approve it at our expense, they told us to be $100,000 to $250,000. And they are willing to convert it, they recommend converting it to a four-way stop, which they would pay for at 100%.
I knew the cost, I just wanted everybody to hear it.
What about the house on the corner? Was that owner contacted about the trees, possibly have to trim?
So speaking with staff who's been here prior, I think the owner's been reached out to in the past. We can reach out again. I think I did send out, and I've got copies. Unfortunately, our right of way doesn't go as far over as we think. And they can, we can ask them to trim, but we're not going to have much enforcement because of the way the right of way is. We can get some of it done.
Because I know when I've gone by there and looked, you know, working police department all those years, you know, it's always been like that. Of course, the trees have grown a whole lot bigger, but maybe it's worth, you know, speaking to them and see if it's something, because I think it's, if you look at the trees, that's, that's a lot of the problem, is the limbs that's grown out, obstructing that view right there.
So, Mayor and council, what if I presented you a fourth option? What if you would be agreeable to let staff work with the property owner and see if they're willing to trim and allow me as your manager to reach out to our state representatives and see if they can do anything to help us with NCOT?
I'm just kind of thinking, Mike.
Well, if, if they would do something about trimming, could we do something about landscaping? If they would cut the trees down, could we landscape it?
I would not recommend that because I think you would go down a slippery slope and then we'd have to do that for others for landscaping.
The only thing I'd say, if you look at this traffic study and look at this counting, there's thousands of cars flowing back and forth in 200 a day making a left-hand turn in that time period. That's a lot of traffic to stop at all given times on, on Richardson Drive.
making a left-hand turn in that time period. That's a lot of traffic to stop at all given times on, on Richardson Drive. And, you know, you, you look at this report, you had a death in 1997, but we all know that death was due to alcohol.
That was not, if I may, Mayor Council, that was actually a child fatality.
It was. One of my students.
So, so even then, one, one death, two deaths and one alcohol was contributing factor related at night in almost 30 years. And the majority of these turns are right-hand turns.
Right.
Yeah. It was an issue, been looked at backwards, sorry.
Yeah, left.
But the, but the majority of the traffic is...
Yeah, in Kansas City, yeah.
Southbound 743 out of Sherwood Drive. So I, I guess when we come, what side of Sherwood Drive, I guess I'll need to look and figure that out, but you got 2,700 and 2,800 cars crisscrossing that intersection. They're just going straight through every day. Could you imagine putting a stop sign, a four-way stop sign right there for 3,000 cars a day in each direction? That...
I, I would just say, speak with the property owner and, and possibly look, see how you feel. It's kind of like Duke Energy does with Asplin and all where they trim from the lines. And keep them away, be a situation, not cutting down the trees, but I think if you look at the limbs and stuff and they're fair trimmed closer to the tree, that may save in, what, I mean, that might be a simple fix.
Yeah, I would see it no different than the right-of-way proposes and we're paying people if we, if they would accept an offer to trim the tree or cut the tree down or replant a different tree. And we just pay them, you know, a, a certain amount. I, I certainly respect your opinion on, on what you said in terms of that, but also look at it slightly different. I know it's a little different when you're talking about utilities, but public safety in that aspect. I just think a four-way stop sign or even a stoplight in general, you know, for 199 cars versus 3,000 each way, I think that, I think that we would be backing up and, and we'd be getting more complaints. And it'd be like the bicycle lane on South Park Drive, we'd be backing up, wanting to take it out.
Fastest traffic going east.
Yeah.
So I, I think it would behoove, I, I would encourage anyone to, to go that way and try and make a left turn. I think you'll find it excessively dangerous.
Yes.
That's why I do suggest, you know, DOT has acknowledged it is a safety concern. I would suggest there's maybe a fourth option. Let staff try and work with the property owner, but I also think this could be a great opportunity to reach out to our state representatives and see if they could help us with anything. Because that traffic light there, that, that's what makes no sense to me. As your city manager, I mean, you have a caution signal there. I don't think it's too much of an ask for DOT to upgrade that. Because you, they've already acknowledged that's a problem there. You drive not even 500 feet down the road to Crescent Drive, there's a traffic signal there. Why this is treated any differently, I see an issue with that, and that's why I think you should involve your state representatives and at least get their take, and they may not get help.
I, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I just don't, I'd hate to see us bear a quarter million dollar cost.
Don't agree that we should either.
In terms of that, you know. So I'm not against asking, asking our representatives to assist in that, that's what they're there for.
And if we were to do the four-way stop, that would just be experimental, wouldn't it?
One of the things that we can say for...
As your manager and his staff that was in that meeting, we were not in favor of the four-way stop for everything that counsel discussed here tonight. I think that's going to cause a lot more issues. I think it is going to back up traffic, and I think you're going to have a lot more citizen outcry. We were not in favor of that, but we needed to let you know that's the only thing DOT is willing to do.
If you do a four-way, the stoplight, if they install a stoplight, it's going to detect traffic when it rolls up in these two long come down.
Exactly.
When there's nothing there, when the stop sign, you're creating...
Correct.
This continual stopping and chaos. That's why I'm against the stop sign, you know. I'm not against the stoplight, I'm paying for it, for that kind of money.
And we agree for that cost, the city should not bear that cost.
And I think we all know we've had many issues with DOT and the city of Reesville with roads and Barn Street is a prime example, multiple aspects up and down. That there seems to be a, uh, appetite to cut corners here in the city, you know.
Option 4 sounds like the best.
So, Mayor Council, I'm, we get consensus on, I will bring this back to you next month to look at.
I'm sure they're in favor of that. Consensus on that, option 4.
Reaching out to the property owner?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, presentation on recreation activities on Lake Hunt. enclosure 9, Blake Frankie. Frankie, is it Frenchy or Frankie?
Frankie.
Frenchy?
Frankie. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. So I had a plan today to kind of talk to you guys about possibly doing swimming at Lake Hunt and also maybe docks there. And then about 9:00 this morning, I got hit from the state with a completely different change of plans, but actually it's probably going to benefit the idea that you guys want to do. So, um, we had talked with the council, uh, the city manager had, and citizens themselves that asked about swimming, asked about jocks out at Lake Hunt. Because Lake Reesville, it's, you'll see in this presentation, it's not allowed. But so, we'll kind of go through this, and then we'll talk about what I found out through the state today, pushing forward and allowing us to do whatever it's counsel pleases. So, just a little bit about Lake Reesville, approximately 750 square acre reservoir. It approximately holds 2.7 billion gallons of water. It's Reesville's primary source of drinking water. And public water supply categorizes Lake Reesville as a Class 1 reservoir. A Class 1 reservoir means the reservoir from which water flows by gravity, or is pumped directly into a treatment plant or small therapy which stores base acid necessary to drink. So, Lake Hunt is approximately 176 square acre reservoir. Water from Lake Hunt still may naturally travels down through a tributary directly to Lake Reesville. It is an emergency water source for the city of Reesville. In emergencies, you can see there's four valves that operate the bottom drain of Lake Hunt, and that would just allow to naturally go through the tributary to Lake Reesville. And what changed today is that public water supply originally categorized Lake Hunt as a Class 2 reservoir. We reached a document, worked with Angela's great company, find old documents, and they have told us that it is no longer a Class 1 or Class 2 reservoir. So just give you a little water treatment process overview. Water is pumped from Lake Reesville and then treated. Water enters the water treatment plant and begins the process of vaculation, sebentation, filtration, and disinfection. Water is stored in the water treatment plant's 3 million gallon bin. And depending on demand, water is pumped to the city's high-service pumps, out to elevated storage tanks, which provide water pressure or additional water supply for emergencies. So just a little bit of the rules governing public water systems, it's NCAC 15, subject to everything. They, um, do any surface water facilities that would go to a water treatment plant. And you must maintain at least 50 feet of class 1 or Class 2 reservoir measured from the normal elevation and shall be controlled by its water requirement. So a little bit longer in this one, I can kind of sum it up for you. So it talks about recreational activities. If you wanted to have recreational activities on Class 1 or Class 2, you do have to go through the Commission of Public Health to get that approved, which we have done for Lake Hunt, well, for Lake Reesville. That's why we allow certain things on Lake Reesville. Upon request for such resolution, the division makes calls and a thorough investigation, and then they decide on what we can and can't do on certain reservoirs. And that just kind of goes through here, talks about the protection of the water quality, and just protecting what we serve as our critical water source out to the citizens. And so this also talks about fishing, talks about how you are required to have a lake warden, have certain docks, things like that, all things that we already do at Lake Reesville. And so these are current activities allowed at Lake Hunt and Lake Reesville. So allowing on Lake Reesville, fishing, if the Reesville has an award for water check inspectors, which we do, and boating and skiing. And then when I made this presentation, allowing on Lake Hunt was only fishing, boating, and skiing. And then not allowing the lake was swimming or boating. So today, when talking with public water supply, they had ruled that there's no law on Class 1 or Class 2 reservoir. So we are allowed to do recreation on Lake Hunt as we please. So it'd be up to city council on maybe what we move forward with, if they would like to entertain the thought of swimming at Lake Hunt, maybe possible boat docks. There's river area rules that will apply to that, so we'll have to look into that. But we did work really hard with the state to get it approved so we can move forward with swimming and possible boat docks at Lake Hunt. So, uh, what we're asking tonight is just to see if you guys have the interest to move forward with possibility of swimming. I know that recreational water quality has that, and then also we're going to work with, um, drill and subtle river area rules around for like docks.
Mayor Council, thank you so much. And Blake, thank you so much. I'm in this team. I've done a great job guiding you into this, literally about the end of the day. We finally got something back from the state stating that, so we kind of had to change our presentation around a little bit. But really just want to give you an update tonight, because I know that's been a topic we've been discussing for quite some time. But if there is a desire to let us look further in now that we've learned that swimming is permitted, possibly boat docks, we've done no for sure yet. But at least allow us the opportunity to explore that since we did learn today it is allowed. That's all we're looking at.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of that. Does it look at the liabilities too?
But it's sort of right next to, this is really the gem.
I really think so. As a water treatment plant superintendent, my first thing is want to make sure that our citizens have the best water quality available. But I think that Lake Hunt really is a hidden gem, and that we could use that as our avenue for the swimming, because we don't have that at Lake Reesville for the campers and everything that comes there. So I think it's a really great opportunity to utilize that lake to something that's not them. But we can also, as I'm talking to the city manager about, we can also implement on our end, we can do same thing at Lake Hunt, just to make sure nothing's going on or not. Putting extra load on Lake Reesville, which would put load on water treatment plant.
So, the investigation would, would include whatever we would have, changes we'd have to make in order to allow swimming?
Right, and that would go through Parks and Rec, I think they would want us to back. Jets, kids, all right, if you do it like that, whatever you guys want. But mainly, it was just to make it for sure that you guys wanted us to go forward back to the city council.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next item, consideration for change order number 4 for the wastewater treatment plant, Hard Works Project, enclosure 10. Before I can put a little public voice to that.
Good lady and city council, mayor, city manager. I'm before you this evening to present to you, um, Jay Pfeiffer Construction proposed, proposed change order number 4 for wastewater treatment plant, Headworks Replacement Project. Many of you are aware this has been an online project at a wastewater treatment plant. The amount of this change order is for 106,341,000 dollars, which you approved. The amount was negotiated down on a previous total of 107,410 dollars. And there is a significant factor that impacted the cost of this change order, change. April 28, 2025, there was a severe storm event resulting in flood remediation to remove contaminated soil around the Headworks. The lower cost of this Headworks remediation was 41,330 dollars. And soil was polluted, caused taking to a land that came in at 34,589 dollars. But to put those two together, that amount is about 75,000 dollars, 106, just for the soil remediation, uh, for contaminated soil. Additionally, uh, in the upgrade of the Headworks Project, the state inspectors came in and decided that we really needed to upgrade, uh, our pole-like design of the facility. That cost was about another additional 12,000 dollars. Which brings, uh, the cost of this change order, most of the cost, the 88,000, have nothing to do with the construction or the upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. The 18,000 dollars that remains is very reasonable for a change order, but the factors that we could not control are the, uh, factors dealing with the overflow resulting from the storm that we had on that day. Keep in mind that the wastewater treatment plant has to process, um, flow down in, which is wastewater, but also stormwater. So the, uh, typical and original design of the outdated plant, the Headworks, uh, does not facilitate, uh, a major storming in along with the normal flooding of the plant. That's why we had to redesign the Headworks and redesign the project and upgrade the Headworks on the head of the plant. Because it controls the flow rate of the plant. The Headworks Project is eventually complete. We're working on the final punch test, which should be able to close it out. A closeout, there should be a final closeout change order affecting the change resulting from the punch test. Do you have any questions about the project thus far?
What is a home-like design?
Those are the lights that own poles, the shine of the facility. Anytime you do an upgrade, we're going to explain to the states, they'll come in and inspect it. So they come in, when they come in and inspect the work, we do the pass inspection, they may ask if we do certain things that, when we initiate, initiated the project, things that we probably didn't think about at the project's inception. So that was just something that came out of the final inspection from the state, when they came in to inspect it, so.
Do you host this, uh, life?
Well, we did negotiate the cost down on 1, 107, 106, uh, because we felt like that, you know, silicon cost, uh, they could absorb, you know, when you re-ended. Paying the amount, we felt like some of the costs that could absorb, but most of the factors that I outlined here this evening are beyond control, stolen the project. That's why we're not so much, okay? So if you need initial approval, I would just ask that you make a motion to approve change order number 4 for the Headworks Project.
Anyone else have any questions? You have a motion for that change order, number 4?
Motion.
Motion and set. All those in the discussion, all those in favor raise your hand. Consideration of requests for qualifications for additional on-call engineering services, enclosure 11. I shall inform Assistant City Manager of Public Safety and Parks.
Agreed, Mayor Council, Madam Manager Moore. I'll be very grateful at the same time. If I can turn your attention to the memo that you're going to back into that references the RQ for additional on-call engineering services. Uh, if you remember back and following 2024, after Steve Grant and Richard Wong retired, Josh Bay published an RQ for some additional well for on-call engineering services as a whole. With your approval, it was two contracts awarded, one being a primary to McKeel Associates and as a backup to D and P Data Smart Valley. Since Josh's departure, and specifically the uptick of engineering and consulting service to the management side, we decided to publish an RQ for additional on-call engineering services and consultative services. And we published that on June 2nd, all the submittals were responsible, we were required to receive by June 23rd. That was a very successful process. We received a total of 14 submittals. It was a variety of engineering services and consultative services firms. So, with your approval and all considerations tonight, based on the results of the scores that we've used from the panel, which was myself, Madam Manager Moore, and Assistant Manager Amy Cloud, staff has recommended approval of all firms to ensure the city has a diverse group of consultants to provide a wide range of services. This contract is three years and has two options, one of the extensions. Again, with this approval, there's no cost associated with having these firms on call. With this approval, we just allow us to not have to do additional RQs for some projects, because we've already known this process. We can send a project to them, they can quote it, and then, you know, we can go straight to contractual negotiations on hourly prices for their services. Any questions?
No questions, what's the effect of the council?
The motion to allow staff to receive security agreements with firms that are just going to call in here, see.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor raise your hand. Next item, board in commission, point mix, consideration of general point mix. Reedsville Planning Board, enclosure 12, Senator Moore, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This will be your first meeting that we will not be having the...
This will be your first meeting that we will not be having the ballot voting, this will actually be a motion vote under the recently approved rules of procedure. The following applicants have been received for appointments to the board listed below, and those applications are enclosed in your packet. There is one vacancy on the Reesville planning board. Two applicants have been received for the one vacancy on the planning board. Charles Fag of 103 Virchwood Drive and Ann Lane of 536 Park Lane have each applied for the open five-year term on this board. Once this vacancy is filled, there will be no other vacancies on this board. So Mayor and Council, what we'd be looking for tonight is a motion, if council so desires to approve one of the two applicants for this five-year appointment on the planning board.
I have a motion for, a motion for Charles Fag of the planning board.
Second. Motion, Charles Fag. The discussion. All in good. Next item, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to forego my report just due to the time constraints, my report is in your agenda packet. The one item I would like to note is, I do want to recognize Ms. Drew Vicolo, who has been promoted as your Planning and Development Director. She apologized she had a family emergency, but we're really excited to have Drew on board in this position. She's a tremendous asset, and I think she'll give you the bigger asset to the city of Reesville as you roll. So, Mayor and Council.
Council members report us, have a vote in?
No votes.
Number four.
Alex, I'm glad.
Well, done.
How awesome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just really quickly, we're really excited to speak this week inside of the field, and also conference series next week. Summer is kind of a slower time for us, we're partnering a lot with you guys, but then also prepping for the very busy fall events that are going to happen. But we do have the ice cream social coming up, very excited about that. That will be a little juicy part on the 17th, Friday's the deadline, it is open to all chamber members, all employees, and all of the staff and families. So make sure that if you want to attend that, that you get your reservation in, so we can have enough of everything. Next cash bomb will be on August 1st, and that will be announced before we do it, we still tease that. Gold Turm is coming up, August 13th, and that is at Oak Hills, we are taking reservations and registrations for teams actively. We still have the CTE Rubiconic coming up, we have a new member of Lobbetique, and our next coffee and connections in August will be hosted at the Reesville area, I mentioned downtown. And that is on the first Thursday, I'm sorry the date is not there, I did not catch that, but it's on the first Thursday, so.
Council coaches.
Six-five, thrill, twos, and six-six, and then we're a local team coach of sports system here, to pass some big ballistics for the ladies, to the ladies.
Four, four, five, two.
Next on the agenda, we'll be moving to first floor conference room for a closed session to discuss an item under Attorney General Plan Fruich, personally about pursuant to NCGS 143-318, eleven, eight, three, and six. Does that motion for a closed session?
Motion.
Second. Motion on second, discussion. All those in favor, it's right here. We won't be returning to the council channels, so thank you all for being here.